What's that other screen show, anything? Is there a lot of people on or is it just us?
One, one of these, one of these participants is another, is the system I'm using to broadcast the meeting.
Okay.
So I will be ready in a second.
Okay, now I'll read off the announcement and we can go from there. I don't see. See Janelle, I didn't see.
Go to the calendar on our website, right?
That's what we're trying to anyway.
Okay.
The link is usually, yeah, the link is usually on the ZBA. I'm all fingers right now. No, I think I'm okay. If you're available, I'll call you if I have a problem, but thank you.
Waiting on Chris, Gus, so we can open the meeting.
Let me go check with him, Bruce.
No, he said he was, he was in there. I think he can talk to us.
Okay.
I can, just one second.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Trying to get, trying to get you guys on YouTube, but some of our tech is being a little bit weird.
Archie's waited, waiting to be let in, Gus.
What name is he under, Bruce?
God knows.
Hold on, let me see if I can find it. I got it. I thought this was gonna be a little bit better, give me a list of names here, but maybe it does. Archie, Brico, Mark, Joe, Joe, Janelle. Gus has taken Casey's spot, so.
All right, this thing isn't going on YouTube, but we do have you guys on cable.
Okay. You gonna, is it gonna be broadcast later? Are you gonna record this?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, all right, no big deal. All right, time being approximately six, six P M on December fourth, the zoning board of appeals will come to order. Note to the residents to view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch livestream on Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel, or the live broadcast on Comcast nine and Verizon twenty-nine. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. There will be no public participation during this meeting allowed. Meetings are recorded and archived by the Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast nine and Verizon twenty-nine. Zoom details are ID number nine one zero one five five four four five two seven. There's a link, you can get onto Zoom if you go to and get it, get the thing off, you can do it off a computer that way, it's hard to do it off an iPad. Announcements from the chair, I already made the announcement about participation. Any comments after the meeting should be sent to G Brown at Franklin M A dot gov. First on the agenda, approval of the minutes of November twentieth, I think the members have been provided a copy. If you've had a chance to read them, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody out there?
Motion to approve minutes.
Need a second. Can we hear Archie on the phone, on the, on the T, on the, on the call?
Now he should be unmuted.
All right, he should be unmuted.
All right, seconded.
All right, thank you. You gotta unmute Janelle too. I think she was unmuted at one time, but.
She was.
Okay. Sorry, Janelle.
Are you muted?
All right, yeah, sorry. I muted myself because I was wrestling papers, but I guess the way the meeting is set up, we can't unmute ourselves. So I won't mute myself again.
Yeah, evidently, okay. All right, time being approximately, oh, we did the minutes, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, be a roll call vote. Archie?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next, first topic, six P M, approximately six P M, four forty-four East Central Street, tag all C up against the building permit to construct two hundred and sixty-four unit multifamily development, the building permit is denied without a comprehensive permit from the ZBA. Okay, Mark, it's in your court, the ball's in your court now.
To the chair.
Oh, that's right, Joe, Joe's gotta recuse himself.
To the chair, this is Joe Halligan, I'm recusing myself from the meeting.
Thanks, Joe.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Listen in, I know you'd be listening in.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Okay, so just bit of a primer before we start. I, I know you and Archie have done a hundred and thirty-two of these. Is Janelle, is this your first?
Is this my first forty B? Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So let me just give you some basic background here. Thank you at the last meeting for giving me instructions to prepare an approval with conditions, that's what I've done. We're gonna go through the conditions one by one tonight, some of them take a little bit more time than others. I see Joe is here and he's gonna cover his conditions from his last period review letter and explain them. What we're essentially doing here is trying to make the development of the forty B orderly and safe and consistent with public health and safety. There's, and that's a difficult task in a forty B because the Housing Appeals Committee rules say that the application has to be preliminary in nature. It's not, we're not dealing here with definitive drawings, ready for a building permit. So in many instances, we have to sort of take the bull by the horns and say, well, you gave us, consistent with the rules, you gave us a preliminary drawing. And now we wanna make sure that we get a, a final drawing that is worthy of a building permit. You've gotta kind of add instructions to the applicant in many cases to get them from preliminary to definitive. And so a lot of this is on that. The, the affordable stuff is pretty boilerplate at this point. It's the same conditions usually in every forty B. Twenty-five percent of the units are gonna be deemed lower moderate income, in their case, it's moderate income seventy to eighty percent. And there's just a lot of paperwork that has to be addressed in the decision, we can go through that relatively quickly. I think that's probably a good place to start. If you have questions, shout me down and I'll stop and go over what we need. I have spoken with attorney Freeman this week and I did send him a copy of the draft so that he could take a look at it, and he has been kind enough to send me back a track change version of it. I'm not gonna go over, over every one of his comments, some of them I'll continue to deal with him on, off camera. Remember that you're looking at a partial decision, we're not gonna talk about waivers tonight and I have to fill in facts and findings of the decision, but the most important part of any decision is by far the conditions. So this is a night to plow through these eighty or a hundred conditions and make sure we understand where we're going with this. So I'm gonna start on regulatory conditions, which is on page three of the decision. And you can see that there are there's twenty-four of them, so let's take a walk through.
Can I ask two just general questions? Were these conditions developed with input from town departments? I know at a previous meeting, there was talk of setting up a meeting between you, attorney Bobrovsky and Chair Hunterd and departments, did that take place?
No, because you closed the hearing at the end of the last meeting and anything that the departments would offer would be outside the record of the public hearing. And I thought, you know, that there certainly was contributions from the departments during the, during the tenure of the public hearing. So it wasn't really kosher for us to do that after the close of the public hearing.
I think, I think what she's, I think what she's asking is, we had a meeting between me, you and a couple of other, Gus, I think Jamie, and that's what she wanted to know, I think that's what she was trying to get.
That was in early November.
That was before we closed the public hearing.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's pretty par for the course. Under the open meeting law, if there's a quorum of the board, you have to post it, but there was not a quorum, so.
Were there any notes from that meeting? I mean, I guess some of the questions I have about conditions maybe were already addressed.
I didn't take any, whatever, whatever notes I took are my work product and I'm not gonna give them to anybody anyway, so.
Okay, and then it was very not clear to me at all that closing the public hearing, I guess it was just a misunderstanding on my part because this is my first time going through this process that I thought that meant we're closing the public hearing to the public, but town departments and town staff were still able to be referenced, communicated with.
Yeah, not, not the way it works. So closing the public hearing means, means nobody can talk at the meeting other than the members of this board. Now, the chairman has the gavel, so he can allow somebody to speak if he wants to, but that otherwise, this is an open meeting, not a public hearing anymore. The deliberations of the members have to be in a place where it can be viewed by the public and the public is welcome to view it, but the public doesn't any longer have a right to speak and that includes members of town departments.
Okay, that's unfortunate because the input we got from many of the town departments was back at the, the lip process or, you know, very early before the design, even the preliminary design evolved. And so at the last meeting when I was asking how we get input on the final waivers, which was November third, we have no input on the final list of waivers from the town departments. And as far as I'm concerned.
Just from the Concom, I think.
Just from the Concom.
Yeah.
And, you know, thankful to the Concom, they were the first ones to even write a letter in the first place and, and then did follow up on the evolving process.
I just wanna point out, Janelle, I mean, this is your first one, but it's not unusual that we get no comment from the town boards. We get no comment from the school department, we get no comment, we get a comment from the fire department, very seldom get anything from the D P W. Never get anything from the police department. So, you know, this is par for the course, this is what we have to deal with all the time. We send out a thing, we send out a memo, Casey does, with the announcement of the meeting. And if anybody has any questions, comments or anything, you know, that's the time that they can put them in. But you gotta remember, this went through a cursory review with the planning board, the conservation commission and the town council to end up on our desk. That's how it ended up with us. So everybody had a crack of the apple, a couple, more than once, but unfortunately, not everybody considers that their opinions are valued, so they probably don't put them in.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Gus Brown, building commissioner.
Yeah.
In the beginning of this process, the proponent provided booklets for town departments and town staff and everyone was called and some picked them up and some did not. So there was a chance for them to make those comments if the booklets were picked up and if they wanted to, if they didn't pick up the booklets.
Yeah.
Well, and I'll just remind everybody that when we were back in March and the public hearing was about to open, the chairman wrote a letter to the town council, to the conservation commission and to the planning board saying, we know what you thought about this project months ago, but we're in a fifteen day window where we could invoke the Safe Harbor. Would you like to, would you like to advise us again, one way or the other? And I don't think we heard from anybody.
We just heard from Brico, she actually sent a memo saying that she's got it, but she's not really a department, I, I guess she's a department head, but she didn't feel as though she had the authority to say anything about it until Concom met on, so she's the only letter that we got back, you know.
So long story short is that the extension of time to close the public hearing was until November thirtieth. I think we met on November twentieth, there wasn't gonna be another meeting in that ten days.
November twenty-seventh was the first meeting we had and we met again, I think on May eighth after that.
No, I'm talking about just a week ago.
Oh, week ago.
We, they, they let us, they gave us an extension of time to close the public hearing until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we had to act.
Depending on what day we started, what we considered the first public hearing, we might have still been in within that, you know, because we had the, we had the first, we had a redo.
I always take the more conservative position.
Yeah, but we had, we had the first redo on May eighth.
Right, and the opening of the meeting, I believe, was on March twenty-seventh, so.
Correct.
I, I'm counting everything from March twenty-seventh.
Right, okay.
But that, you know, we have a written extension, that's in the past, so. All right, so what I've put under the regulatory conditions is as follows, I'm gonna go quickly, if you want me to stop, I will.
Can you tell us where you started off, attorney?
Yeah, if you look, maybe.
He's on page three.
Okay.
Yeah, it says A, regulatory conditions on the top. I know this came in at two sixty-four. I, I found a revised plan reference to two and I also found the bedroom mix in the applicant's revision materials. So this reflects that they are limited to two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units, hundred and sixteen ones, hundred and twelve twos and twenty-six three bedroom units. All is shown on the approved plans, more about the approved plans later. Describing the project from a legal or a regulatory perspective here, and this is the most important fact. Twenty-five percent, number two, twenty-five percent of, of the units are affordable and they are to be rented in this case at a price not to exceed eighty percent of area median income adjusted for household size. That means that a one bedroom can be rented for less than a two bedroom, a two bedroom for less than a three bedroom, because the more people in the household, the higher the household income will likely be. Subject to approval by DH, formerly DHCD, now E O H L C. The, the affordable units will be regulated in such a way that the agency will count them on the famous subsidized housing inventory. And that's just a way to assure that the units will be regulated consistent with state standards. I believe you were at ten point eight, six percent on the day the application came, based on the S H I from June of twenty twenty-three. There's been a new one, but the date of application is the critical date for the snapshot, not whatever happened during the public hearing. And you were already over at that point in time. Number three, the S H I information is something that the applicant helps, can help the town prepare, so we want the applicant to notify the town manager when building permits are issued and we also wanna know when occupancy permits are issued. That information can be communicated, communicated to E O H L C. Number five, the units will be permanently affordable. In other words, for so long as the project is not in compliance with the Franklin zoning bylaw or for the longest period allowed by law. Most towns just put perpetuity here, but it's kind of, I've always thought it was odd that you would wanna have an affordability after the buildings are torn down in a hundred and twenty years on vacant or something that's so as long as there's a project there, that project will not conform with your zoning in, in all likelihood. And as long as it doesn't conform, there's a case from Wellesley that says it's always going to be a forty B project. Number six, when the units are assigned in the original lease up, twenty-five percent will be affordable and they'll be dispersed throughout the buildings, four buildings here. The affordable units will not be identifiable from the exterior and they will also have the same fit up as the market rate units. In a rental like this, the initial lease up will initially identify the affordable units, unit one, unit ten, unit twenty. But things change pretty rapidly once the building is occupied. If you hit the lottery and you're an affordable household, then your unit is no longer an affordable unit, it will become a market rate unit. And if you're going to fall below the twenty-five percent standard, the next market rate unit that becomes available will become an affordable unit. So you can see that there's really no worry here about what the units look like because they're all the same. Some are one, some are two, some are three, but other than that, they're all the same. It's not like a homeownership project where unit fourteen is affordable and you don't want it, you, you want it to look like the other market rate for sale units. Number seven, there is a regulatory agreement, it's a standard form. These standard forms were basically put in place about twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, twenty-five years ago. Prior to two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, this was all quickly evolving with the New England Fund of the Federal Home Loan Bank constituting a subsidy, there were, there was no paperwork to make the documents consistent. That, that quickly became a problem and it was quickly solved. By two thousand three, two thousand four, a standard regulatory agreement is now used on every forty B for sale or rental, and that's the documents that they will be signing here in the final process before the subsidizing agency, which is E O H L C in this case, signs off on it.
Mark, just a quick question. I thought on a lip that the town is also a signatory to the regulatory agreement.
I think you're right. And so that's just a third signature that makes the game play fairly straight. The affordable, at the beginning or in the middle of the project's lifespan, be segregated from the market rate units. If this is going to be built in phases, each phase will have twenty-five percent of the units in affordability. And I don't know that this is going to be built in phases, I'll, I'll ask attorney Freeman whether or not that's the case and, you know, and plans change, so if they're not gonna phase it, this is a condition that's not gonna hurt anything. Number nine, each of the affordable units will be monitored for income certification. There are strict income limits here imposed by E O H L C and the federal standards as well.
Mr. Chairman? I'm, I'm just getting text messages from attorney Freeman and Carlton Quinn, the applicant's engineer, that they're in the waiting room.
That was, that was actually Peter that just rang my phone, so, thanks, Joe.
Joe, could you let me know? Do they, if they wanna speak, just make sure you let me know what name they're under, as I do not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, they, I think they just wanna observe.
Okay.
And the chairman can dictate whether there needs to be clarification, but it's Peter Freeman and Carlton Quinn.
Yep, neither name comes up, but it might be because they, I know I have Moriarty and Gamash and I also have a couple other names that I don't recognize, so if they text you what the name they're, what name they're using, I can let them in if they wanna come in.
Can they, can they hear the meeting right now or are they totally out in the waiting room, out of the?
They gotta be let in, I guess.
Yeah, let me call Peter, hang on. Call Peter Freeman, mobile. Hey, Peter, what, we're trying to guess at what name you're under, can you tell me?
You mean on the, upon the video?
On, on the, yeah.
I don't know, because it doesn't show me, it might be Moriarty, Bealan and Malloy.
It was a Moriarty, there was one.
I got it.
You got him, Gus?
Yeah, I'm gonna let him in anyways.
Okay.
What about, what about Carlton from Allen?
That name is not there either.
Say it again, Gus?
That name is not there, Allen and Major or Carlton is not there, so he's under a different name too.
Well, Peter, once you, once you get in, if he can send you his name for Zoom purposes, then we can let him into.
Okay, did you let AJ in yet?
What's AJ under? What's he under?
Either AJ or Alexander or Levizos or Tag, it may be under T A G, Central.
No, AJ's there, I haven't let him in.
Oh, okay. Can, can you let him in?
Yeah, you can let him in, Gus.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll check with Carlton. And, well, I guess as long as I'm talking to you guys, I can give it to you, so I'll talk to you and I'll find out and I'll talk to you, thanks.
All right. So Peter, for your information, we just went through conditions A one through A. I'm on A nine and you didn't have any comments on those anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, we had, you know, added some stuff on procedural, but in the conditions, A, yeah, right, one through nine.
All right, so I'm gonna continue.
Okay.
A nine is again, as I said, a monitoring requirement so that when the year is up, the tenant's income is monitored to make sure that there's continuing eligibility as an affordable household. And if that's not the case, that unit will become a market rate unit, if it is the case, they just continue on in their lease as an affordable housing unit. And the monitoring is generally done by a third party, the project operator pays for the monitoring and it's something that's done at arm's length so that the results are fair and unbiased. Number ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen, fourteen and fifteen have to do with a springing regulatory agreement. These regulatory agreements, the main regulatory agreement that I've just been referring to, will likely expire probably at the thirty year mark. And at that point in time, a new regulatory agreement is put in place, this one is something to protect the town with the continuing affordability of the units in years thirty-one to time immemorial. So the springing regulatory agreement is something that's drafted between the applicant and the town. I have some examples that I can provide, it's not a rush job because we're not anywhere near the end of the initial regulatory agreement. We wanna be sure that the springing regulatory agreement comports with the Supreme Judicial Court's holding in the of appeals of Amesbury versus Housing Appeals Committee, that's a case referenced in paragraph fifteen. The Supreme Judicial Court worried in that case that towns shouldn't interfere or try to in any way complicate the state subsidy, subsidizing agency relationship with the applicant. But when the subsidy But when the subsidizing agency no longer has a role to play, the town does need to step into the shoes of the state. And so these five paragraphs just define uh, how, how that process works. And uh, how it comports with the Supreme Judicial Court's holding in the, and uh, the Amesbury case. Paragraph sixteen has to do with local preferences. Uh, I, I dug these out of an earlier decision. They may be what you want to continue to do. Seventy percent of the affordable units can be governed by a local preference. That's the limit under federal fair housing standards. And the uh, preferences that you, you, you've used in another forty B, at least one. Is Franklin residents, their parents and children, persons who resided in Franklin within the last two years. Immediately proceeding their application for housing and employees of the town. Of the, of Franklin. So now's the time to tell me whether you want to continue to make these your preferences or you want to do something different.
Uh, it's fine with me, Mark, but I mean, if we don't get anybody, they just rent them out to somebody else, correct?
Yeah, it, it, it's not a local preference, as I understand it, is not strictly for Franklin residents. It's usually a bigger area than that outside of town included. But the bottom line is that you want to. You want to have as many of these affordable units serve your local constituents as, as possible. And seventy percent, as I said, is the limit.
That's fine.
If you, if you can imagine a lottery, um, everybody gets a bean in the pot. And if you have a preference, you get two beans in the pot. That's the way it generally works.
Okay.
Um, if the uh, when the applicant uh. Begins marketing, the uh, marketing plan is going to be submitted to the town. Demonstrating compliance with the local preference. That's paragraph seventeen. Paragraph eighteen, the need for the local preference is something that is generally the town's responsibility. But this makes the applicant a partner of the town in generating that information. In paragraph nineteen, uh, the applicant's marketing plan. Uh, will conform with affirmative action requirements. And in paragraph twenty. If the applicant is in violation of the affordable housing restriction. The ZBA may pursue enforcement rights as are stated under the restriction and applicable law. Number twenty-one, this is the profit limitation. Provision in chapter forty B, profits in excess of those allowed. Uh, are basically to be reported to the subsidizing agency and the town. Generally gets use of these surplus funds uh, over and above the profit limitation. Uh, the applicant annually provides. Um. Any statement of costs and revenues to the subsidizing agency and those should also be shared with the ZBA. Paragraph twenty-three, uh, the town shall have continuing jurisdiction over the project to ensure compliance. Through the, and the enforcement agents here are the building commissioner and the ZBA. But day to day, the enforcement officer is the building commissioner. So um, if there's a violation, it's the building commissioner's job to proceed. Uh, as he would in any other zoning violation, report um, uh, issue a cease and desist. There are appeal rights to the Board of Appeals and review in court after that. And then lastly, prior to receiving any building permit, the applicant will obtain final approval from EO HLC. And provide evidence of such final approval to the building commissioner and the ZBA. So those are the regulatory conditions that we've used before. Nothing new there. Um, pretty standard stuff. So now I'm going to look at the general conditions and I'm going to try to alert the board when, when possible. To comments that have been made um, in attorney Freeman's track change document, s- some of which is just. Uh, you know, typographical and spelling corrections, but others of which are, others which are substantive.
A question through the chair. Um. Do we ever require a financing plan prior to receiving building permit? That confirms capital has been secured so that we don't wind up with a half-built-out site?
That's generally between the applicant and their lender. So we don't, we don't do that. We figure that the, a lender will in good faith fund a project if they're going to get a return on their investment. They're not going to, they're, they're just going to, not going to throw money to the wind. So that's the way that the board is assured.
So in terms of the, the town's. Responsibility here, we don't have any oversight of that. Do we have any way to protect that it, the project is half-done?
Yeah, it, it, the, the, if the project is half-done and the developer walks away. The bank is going to be stuck and the bank is going to be actively looking for somebody to buy the project. I had a project up in uh, the Merrimack Valley years ago, forty units of homeownership. Twenty got built and the developer went bankrupt and uh, property was foreclosed. Lowell five, the bank took it back. They actively shopped it. And they found a, a person who would step into the shoes of the original builder and he finished the other twenty units. But that's the, that the bank, the bank doesn't want the project sitting around.
Well, the town doesn't either. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know this is nothing new, but Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to help um, explain. I agree with Mark, but also the agencies are very rigorous and on the Amesbury case, not to get legal, but that's really something that's in the, within the domain of the. Subsidizing agency, but they are very strict. They actually want, you know, various escrows and what have you. So. There is assurance, even though it's the responsibility of, of the lender and also the subsidizing agency.
Okay.
All right. So on the general condition one, B one. Um, I've included reference to requests for insubstantial or substantial changes. And it's very common for a forty B. Remember it's only preliminary information coming out of the shoots here. And when they get out in the field, it may be that they don't want to. Uh, they, the, their final plans require some sort of change, whether because of topography or finances or whatever. They are allowed to ask the board to make uh, substantial or insubstantial changes. I, I did a project in the town of Saugus for Toll Brothers. I think we went through five. Uh, requests for insubstantial changes. Each of them had multiple items on it. And all of them were approved by the board as being uh, in each case, insubstantial. So there's ref, the, the rules do refer to examples of substantial versus insubstantial changes. Um, they're, they're pretty much what you'd imagine. If you want to, for example, if you want to change the project from a rental project to a for-sale project. That's a substantial change. You've got to hold another public hearing and the board has a new vote and you go forward. But if, but if you want to do something relatively minor, uh, particularly. It's from two sixty-four to two fifty-four. If, if that was a request that was made after the permit was issued. That would be treated as an insubstantial change. Insubstantial changes, if the board gets a request, they have twenty days to act. There's no public hearing. The board simply puts it on the more of, on the open meeting docket. And then takes it up in the meeting and decides whether it's substantial or insubstantial. If it's insubstantial, it's deemed done. If it's substantial, the board must schedule within thirty days and go through the process that looked a lot like the one you just went through. Now there are, there's a third type of change and I, I call them field changes. And these are ones that, you know, they're, they're generally so simple and easy. That I relegated them in my condition to the building, to the building commissioner. Field changes, that is, changes that do not materially affect any aspect of the project shall be submitted to the building commissioner, who shall have the authority to approve such changes. As immaterial changes. In other words, they don't even rise to the level of being insubstantial. Uh, but it is something that often arises in the case of uh, field work. So you're out in the field and you want to make a change and you, you're, you're, you're slogged down in the mud unless you can get somebody to act on this. And the, the, the insubstantial change is a twenty-day process. If the, a call can be made to the building and commissioner and the building commissioner can say, yeah, go ahead. Uh, I'm hoping that Gus will take on that responsibility. Then that seems to speed things up. The applicants provided me with some addition, some different, slightly different language. Reasonable adjustments are typical of the design development process and are allowed and may be approved directly by the building commissioner. We're in the same ballpark here in terms of the language. So I would recommend that um, the applicant be given the leeway to request a field change or an it, or an immaterial change. And that the process be allowed to uh, to get some expedited relief that way. If, if the building commissioner decides this is at the level of an insubstantial change and he wants the board to agree. Then, then he basically tells him to write a letter to the board and he's not, he's not going to approve the field change. I, I think the Saugus project, which was a, a three-hundred-unit project, probably had something on the order of. I'm just guessing, but thirty to fifty insubstantial changes, minor things. That the board uh, heard in five different letters at five different times. So you should expect that. Now, in paragraph.
Can I ask a question?
True.
And I appreciate everybody's patience with me going through this the first time. Um. If, so since we have not gone through the waivers yet. If we deny waivers that result in. Substantial or insubstantial changes to the project. What does that process look like? Or if we, I mean, I guess if, if we're going through these conditions first before the waivers, but then. Our voting on the waivers impacts the conditions. Do we loop back around again?
I think we're going to have to, yeah. But well, I think I, I don't, I didn't get the sense that there were, there were a whole lot of waivers that were. Um, up in the air. So let's see what happens. When I circle back and look at them again and we'll be talking about them on the eighteenth.
Okay. Well, we've never spoken about them as a board. So.
We went through the list.
I recall seeing the Allen and Major gentleman going through them on the, I watched the tape from the October meeting.
Yeah, we went through the list, you know.
It was on the October meeting day because I, I had another meeting that night. So the tape is available. I guess that's my point.
Okay. And, and at that point, we were called upon to. Discuss them, vote on, like we, we've not.
What we did was we talked a little bit about them and probably just moved them on because it's something that we uh, historically approved. You know, that's why they're here with us, because they can't build a project like this without waivers. Uh, there was a, there was a chairman of the zoning, of the conservation commissioner. Had a very eloquent uh, talk about that at the ConCon meeting one night. Just said that that's why forty Bs come in under forty Bs because they're, they get, they get some relief from the local more restrictive. Nature of the regulations than what the state is, but they still have to go, we can't, we can't waive anything from the state regulations. So that's where they have to, uh, they have to meet that, their bailiwick or whatever you want to call it, you know?
Yeah.
So paragraph two is intended to identify the final plans. And by the final plans, I mean. The civil plans, um, stormwater plans, landscaping plans, architectural plans. Um, any traffic improvements that are going to be made. And what I need to put in paragraph two is the precise. Date of the final revision of each and every one of those plans. So I'll be working with the applicant in the next week to get that information. Hopefully in a word format that I can paste into condition number two. Here. Condition number three is just a reference to state laws so that the applicant is aware that we'll be watching. The Building Plumbing Fire Protection Elevator Access and Electrical Codes, the Wetlands Protection Act, the Endangered Species Program. Wastewater Regulations, DEP Stormwater Requirements, Army Corps and Historical Commission Applicable Regulations. Not all of these are applicable to any, to, to some to no extent, others to a larger extent. But it's just a simple reminder that is usually in every permit. Um, in paragraph number, I think I've got two threes, so I'll correct that. Um. The, in second three, no exterior construction on the property before seven AM or after six PM, Monday through Friday. And before eight AM or after six PM on Saturday. And then there's a second part of this that talks about enforcement. By uh, the police department and a prohibition of work, exterior work on federal holidays. I um, believe I took this from an earlier decision. Those are hours that can be um, adjusted depending upon what you want to do. I guess probably good to ask Gus whether those are consistent with what he's used to.
Through the chair, yes, Mark, it is consistent. Um, some folks do get upset um, with Sundays. And the hours that people work too as well. Generally it's seven to nine PM and that could be modified if need be for this project.
So unless there's someone on the board, a voting member that wants to make a motion to change these times. Um, I'm moving on.
Given the proximity to the neighborhood, I would like to. Um. Submit a motion that we. Start not before eight AM.
Yeah, I mean.
That doesn't work in the construction.
Yeah, just, again, uh, through the chair. And again, I understand your concern. That's, that's nice to be concerned, but it just doesn't work as the chairman just said. And, and, and it will also be more restrictive than your bylaw. I can't quote you for sure, but. Uh, but this town, I believe, and just every town I've worked in has hours um, that are consistent with this, as Mr. Brown said.
Are you guys all set with seven to six?
Yes.
Okay.
And not on Sundays.
Yes. No, not on Sundays.
And not on any national holidays.
Right. All right. So number four, all utilities underground except to the extent you, you've got to get to the property. Number five, uh, after the issuance of a CO, the project will be operated and maintained in compliance with the decision. Um, so there's, there's two facets to the CO. One is to control construction quality. The other one is to make sure that the conditions in the permit are observed after the occupancy permit has been. Uh, the project will be served by municipal water and sewer. Number seven, it is a, in fact, uh, DOT project. And I wasn't sure of that when I was going through, so I just made a little note to myself. Um, and those references are contained in Jeff Dirk's conditions. Or recommendations, I should say, that he made in his original traffic impact access study for the applicant. Back in February of last year or of twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry. Uh, we don't want light spill uh, or glare uh, unto adjacent properties. No unshielded sources of light visible from public ways or adjacent properties unless noted on the final plan. I don't.
I, I would like to um, adjust paragraph eight to have um, all fully shielded down lights. At no, um, no greater than three thousand Kelvin.
Um, I can make a reference to the cutoff luminar that you're talking about. I don't have any idea what the number means, but, but the standard that's generically applied these days is that. And I believe that they've done a photometric plan. Uh, there isn't any light overspill or glare onto adjacent property. So if the photometric plan is showing no light trespass. Then, you know, that, that, the number to me is just, I, I don't find it meaningful. Then, you know, that that the number to me is just, I I don't find it meaningful.
Well, I, so the the fully cutoff, so that is that there's no uplight or horizontal light. And that's for general light pollution, and then the number is the color of the light, so rather than a bright white. It's it's not a glaring bright white.
So give me the language that you thought you would want to include there, Janelle.
Um. That there should be um, fully shielded, cut off luminaires, providing downlight at no greater than three thousand Kelvin color temperature.
Thank you. Is, I'm gonna treat this, uh, is there a second for that?
I second it.
Motion made and second any discussion, roll call, vote, Janelle.
Yes.
Archie.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes.
Number nine, landscaping installed in accordance with the approved plans. Number ten, final design plans for stormwater system will comply with the Department of Environmental Protection Regulations and Mr. Pezzola's recommendations on behalf of Hancock Associates. And those are set forth, if any, in subsection D of the conditions.
Um, I know we'll get to it later, but can I just ask, um, Mr. Pezzola, are we requiring all stormwater to be um, managed and recharged onsite?
That depends, I mean it. Managed onsite, yes, but not not retained onsite. There are, there are discharges from the stormwater system that leave the site. Which is allowed because there is existing stormwater discharges from the site. And they're required to match what happens in the existing condition.
Could we require them to recharge onsite?
They are recharging, they are recharging onsite, they're just they're providing um, a certain amount of recharge, infiltration into the ground. But they're not fully retaining all of the water on the site through recharge systems. There are discharges into the wetlands and the wetlands then leave the site. Um, so there are some communities that require a hundred percent retention of the stormwater onsite regardless of the predevelopment condition. And Franklin's not one of them.
No, one of the primary concerns from the town was the flooding from the wetlands in this area across the the adjacent roadways. Um, there was talk at one point that this project will improve that condition, but how do we, how do we make sure that happens as part of this decision?
Well, the the systems, the systems are been, have been designed to um, in some cases, reduce the the rate of um, stormwater that leaves the site, which which could improve um, conditions downstream. So they're, they're afforded the presumption that if they put the system in in accordance with the approved plans and calculations that 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 will happen. There's no provision to monitor that, measure that, verify that. It's it's more of a presumption because there's a plethora of assumptions that are made within these calculations that are applicable to the existing analysis as well as the proposed analysis that make that very difficult. Um, safe to say that they've looked, they've designed it, their PE has stamped it. I've looked at it. Beta Group has looked at it, the Conservation Commission has looked at it, and everyone seems to be comfortable that they're doing um, everything in accordance with the requirements. And and that gets proved out by um, the supplying an as-built plan at the end of the project and a certification from the engineer that says everything has been installed in accordance with the approved plans.
So it is your understanding that what has been proposed will improve the condition on adjacent properties. I, the, the, the reason I'm getting at this is because in the last meeting, we had this little tiny site on Elm Street and we spent half an hour talking about managing the stormwater on that site so that it doesn't go to the adjacent site. And now we have this large development where we know there's water challenges. And yet we're not conditioning what happens with the water.
Well, we are, we most certainly are, and it's been, it's been um, analyzed and reanalyzed over and over again, and they are being held to the same standard as that other project. We, they cannot make the situation offsite any worse, they need to make it equal to or better. Um, it, the the numbers are such that it is uh, possible that, or at least it's theoretically presented that that uh, the culvert at um, Northern Spy Road that people were talking about being um, problematic might be a little bit better. Um, but again, it's not a requirement that they make it better, it's not a requirement that 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 be documented to to come to fruition. Um, they're afforded the presumption that if um, if they build it in accordance with the approved plans, then they have done their due diligence.
I'd like to propose that we think about making it a requirement that they do better. I mean, this is where we're getting into quantifiable mitigation here, right?
Well, do you have a specific suggestion?
Um, I'll go so far as to say a hundred percent retainage on the site.
Well, I think Joe's pointed out that that's not a part of the Franklin rule package. At least at this point in time. So you'd be requiring something in excess of what Franklin regulations require.
We have the uh, we're lucky enough to have the director of the Conservation Commission online if you want her to comment on.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
What, Brika, uh, unmute Brika. You probably could unmute AJ too, I mean, he's paying for all this, he should be able.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, Brika. Have you been following along? Did you get her question?
I, I kind of been following along, so you, Janelle, correct me, um, you were mentioning a hundred percent stormwater.
Retention on the property.
Retention onsite.
Yep.
So that, I mean, from a regulatory standpoint, they are correct, that's not necessarily anything that's required. Um, and the applicant has shown that they're treating as well, and I would actually defer to Carlton on their PE to to explain further what they're doing, so I don't speak for them. But I'm happy to answer any other questions, I guess.
I I would, I would argue that ju- just as an engineer with thirty-five years' experience. Hundred percent retention of stormwater on this site would render the project uneconomic. It 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 would be almost impossible to do um, given the 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 project layout, project parameters. Um, it it just, it, 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 in my estimation is is unreasonable and it's not, it's not something that directly relates to the, the flooding problems that are happening in town. That's not even to mention that it's not their problem, it's not, it's an existing condition. So you're asking them to um, to fix an existing problem that they're not going to make any worse. Um, at, you know, and and potentially be the subject of an appeal and certainly, uh, I I think Attorney Bobrowski can speak to the, the improbability of defending that as a justifiable condition.
Let me touch on that for a second, thank you, Joe. So the Housing Appeals Committee uh, and the regs uh, that are governing forty B um, set a benchmark for developer profitability on a rental project. And I don't, I don't recall seeing a project that has met that benchmark uh, after the application was approved, project eligibility letter. I, in ten years at least. Um, so they, what, that that sets up a dynamic, and that dynamic is that the application that comes to the ZBA is already uneconomic as approved by the subsidizing agency. Now, the developer can choose to go forward anyway, because if they hold the project, they'll, it'll even out. But it it's, the initial snapshot of it is always negative. When a board starts putting conditions in place, deepen that economic problem, and every condition will by definition deepen the problem. Uh, you're just more or less are digging a hole. There's a negotiation to be had with regard to additional conditions. But as Joe said, to, that's an expensive ticket uh, that you're talking about, Janelle, making it a hundred percent onsite. Changes the site dramatically and probably eliminates a large portion of the site from usability for housing. Um, I'll leave Joe to comment on that.
If, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but Carlton um, could touch on just the proposed design details and um, some of Beta's peer review as well as Mr. Pezzola's peer review better, better than me. If if we care to hear from him, maybe Carlton could be unmuted, he he knows the details pretty well. Carlton versus in terms of the flood storage capacity of our site versus proposed versus existing conditions. Gus, is it possible to unmute him?
Yeah, I don't see him in position. There he comes. Can you unmute Carlton, Gus?
Mr. Chairman, just to recap, the YouTube channel is not working.
Right.
And folks are in the waiting room. And under the circumstances, I'd like to ask you if I could let them in.
Yeah, you can let them in, they're gonna be muted and you know, no picture, so it doesn't make any difference to me, they can watch it that way.
Sure. And the other, Carlton has to be unmuted.
I am muted.
He's all set now.
Yep.
Carlton, you got a two-minute answer on this?
Um, yeah, I have a pretty quick one, and we did go through this at length at one of the Conservation Commission meetings where we went through a bunch of line items on how we were improving the stormwater and flooding um, of the area. Um, there's a couple of dynamics involved, so um, the first being that there's the flood mitigation onsite um, allows more flooding onsite than currently exists today. So we should be reducing the flooding impacts of the surrounding areas as we have more flooding volume available on our site in the proposed conditions than we do currently in the existing conditions. Um, and second of all, um, in the hundred-year storm event for this site, we reduce the rate of which the water comes off the site by, you know, detaining, retaining it, infiltrating it, but above and beyond that, which is not required, we're also reducing the volume of water that comes off the site, so in the existing conditions, we've, we've shown that more waters coming off the site today than will be coming off the site in the proposed conditions. Um, so we did know that that was an issue that the Conservation Commission was gonna lean into on the flooding. So those were items that were important to us to get on the project so that we could get through the peer review, because those items would have been um, a bone of contention with the butters and the peer viewers as we went through that process.
Okay, is that clearly noted in all the peer review documents, and can we include that in the conditions somewhere that we are um, that we are removing more of that volume that currently comes off the site?
Is that a question for me?
It it's a question for, I guess, Attorney Bobrowski.
So so we're required to make the flooding mitigation better, um, that's a requirement, we, we have no option. We're required to reduce the rates, um, the volumes. Um, if you want to put a condition in that we're matching or reducing the volumes, that's, we're not required to do that, but we, I don't think we have an issue having that as a condition. If that helps.
Rico, I said she can answer if unmuted.
Thank you, thanks, Janelle, thanks, Gus. Um, yes, so we do have all of Beta's peer reviews, the applicant does as well. Um, I have sent that over to Casey, there actually should be a shared folder that you have access to for all of conservation's um, documentation. Um, it's neither here nor there now that it's December fourth at seven PM, but I'm happy to provide um, at least the title, um, author, date, and um, information for conditions of those documents.
I just want to make sure if there is an agreement to do better than the minimum, uh, that it's tracked somewhere.
Sure, I understand. Um, so we do have that, we do have that documentation on the Conservation um, Commission side. I missed most of that review since I was on maternity leave, but we do have it, Beta did take charge, and they would have taken charge with that anyways, even if I was here. So.
I can, I can put a condition together for Attorney Bobrowski that speaks to um, the a- additional um, requirement to control post-development volume to equal to or less than pre-development. Which again is not a requirement of the state stormwater requirements, but since, since the applicant has already done that, we can memorialize it, and then what that would do is prevent them from coming back with a a modification to the drainage design that brought them into you know, compliance with rate and not compliance with 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 that specific condition.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, before we leave this page, I just want to go back uh, to talk about number seven on mine, um, it's really eight because we had two threes, we'll fix that. So this, number seven says the project subject to review and approval of Mast dot. But the applicant has pointed out correctly that the town does not have jurisdiction uh, to order the applicant to do something in a roadway that is under the jurisdiction of DOT. And so they've added some language there that I don't find objectionable, it says improvements located in the state's right-of-way shall be subject to the review and approval of Mast dot, including but not limited to the driveway entrance which requires an access permit from the state, the applicant shall obtain necessary and approval approvals for improvements within the right-of-way. And if substantial changes result from Mast DOT approval process, they'll basically come back to the board for approval of any substantial or insubstantial changes. So I just want to alert you that that uh, language in number seven, which uh, does not reference the lack of jurisdiction, will be corrected to do that. With that, I'm down on um, number fourteen. All structures and site improvements shall remain private in perpetuity, including all ways, parking areas, street lighting, drainage, buildings, sewer and water infrastructure. The applicant will alone bear the cost of maintenance, repairs and replacement for the same in perpetuity. So this is not a situation where they're gonna be coming to the city council and asking for some appropriation in order to fix something. Number fifteen, twenty-four seven monitoring. Number fifteen, twenty-four-seven monitoring for the project. Um, I had a sentence in there that talked about camera monitoring. And they, they didn't like that, so I guess we can talk about that for a second. Joe, do, do you recall, we had camera monitoring in the, in the Wilmington project, um?
We did, with a live feed to the police.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's, what's to stop the management company from putting cameras in it to begin with?
Well, the, the, you know, the, generally, if you're gonna put cameras in, you know, they're, they're very useful in terms of crime prevention. So that's why I had a sentence that indicated that the, uh, location would basically be worked out with the police department. So I, I don't feel strongly about this. I just know we've put it in other comp permits.
So you want it, but they don't want it. That's what you're talking about?
Basically.
Well, just leave it in.
Okay. All right, number fifteen, the project will be sprinkled in accordance with federal and states, or, uh, uh, state standards and national fire protection standards. Final fire alarms will be submitted to the fire chief. Sixteen, the applicant will ensure that all underground water pipes will have watertight joints. I gotta move that one to the underground so that they're back to back. But other than that. Seventeen is a provision that's, I usually put in for the benefit of the applicant. Um, that one of the conditions says earlier that you're not gonna get a CO until you've put in everything, right down to the smallest bush in order to get a certificate of occupancy. But, you know, what happens when the smallest bush has not been planted and it's now October thirtieth? And the season for planting is, or today, and the season for planting is gone. You, uh, can instead establish, um, eligibility for a certificate by establishing a performance guarantee approved by the town as to form in an amount that would be estimated in accordance with the subdivision regulations, which is usually where that's, uh, standardized. So there's a margin of error. The, there's the cost of the improvement plus a margin and an inflationary addition. And if you've got the money to put the improvement in, and it's a minor improvement that's been stalled, why not give them a certificate of occupancy? We need the housing. They don't have to use this. It's for their benefit. Um, number.
Would we ever give a temp CO with a time limit on it?
Say it again.
Would we ever give a temp CO with a time limit to finish the work?
That's a question for Gus.
Are you gonna kick people out of their apartments? I don't.
What was the question again, Janelle, please?
You ever.
Temporary occupancy.
Temporary occupancy?
Yeah, so there's a provision in here for, um, that we wouldn't hold up a certificate of occupancy if something minor was incomplete. And I'm asking, would we give a temp CO with like a year to finish the work or something?
Well, if we have a bond or a performance guarantee, like a tripartite agreement, and they don't do the work, we're gonna execute on it. It's a lot of fun to do that. The bank always denies that they've given any kind of a promise.
I don't think, I don't think Franklin gets involved with that.
Well, it would, that's a normal thing for the planning board and the subdivision control world.
Yeah.
But, um, cause that's the way you secure the final completion of the roadways.
I'm, I'm okay to keep it in as long as there's something.
If I could just speak on that for a second.
Go ahead, Gus.
Temporary occupancies do happen. We do not like to give them out. Under circumstances with construction and so forth, it does happen. But it's a, it's a last resort in my book that we do that. Um, but again, certain circumstances we do.
Mister Chairman, may I throw you just a, just a technical thing? I don't consider it substantive. Um, mark at that, and, and this condition we had added, um, that no certificate shall be issued until infrastructure, et cetera. Uh, and you had just said for the phase, I think, but, but what I think is more specifically accurate is, um, that those improvements necessary to serve the building or buildings for which such certificates are requested. Cause if it's per phase, it could be part of a phase, you know, like a later building that's still in the same phase where we wanna occupy a building. So I, I think it's more accurate and meaningful if we make that minor change.
I, I see that sentence in your track change and I will move it over.
Thanks. And then I, I think it comes up later too, but at the end you said that we can't use a letter of credit. And it's true that it's not mentioned in the subdivision statute that you cite. But in terms of, um, in terms of just making it easier for a developer, it still gives the security to the town. And in many comprehensive permits I've done, you know, boards have been okay with a letter of credit. Some ways it's easier to deal with the bank with a letter of credit because it's supposed to be very automatic as opposed to dealing with a, you know, with a, uh, a surety company.
I bow to the board's, uh, decision here. Uh, I don't know what, what your experience has been, if, if any experience at all with a letter of credit. I think I put this in because at least one of the boards I've worked with, that, that they didn't want it. But I don't, other than that, that's, that's, that's something I inherited from another job. The three, the types of security available in forty-one eighty-one U, which is referenced, first is a covenant, but that wouldn't apply here, which is, which it says. The second is, uh, a bond. The third is money in escrow, which is very rarely used. Um, and the last one is a tripartite agreement in which the bank enters into a covenant with the developer and the, the, the planning board, usually in a subdivision, and agrees that if the developer doesn't do the work, the bank is holding the money to finish the job.
Yeah, when Frank, when Franklin was building subdivisions, they used tripartite agreements to get them done.
Yeah, that's pretty common. Mister Chairman?
Go ahead, Gus.
Because of the technical difficulties, I'd just like to read an email that I just got, if that's okay, if you'll allow it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is from a resident. The meeting should not have been allowed to continue. Why did Gus even have to ask the chairman if we should be allowing, allowed in at all, much less one hour later? Are we not entitled to access per open meeting laws? It sounds like we were all left in the waiting room intentionally. I would like this confirmed.
Listen, I have no control over the thing and, 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 you know, Gus is doing the best he can at it. It's the first time he's run the meeting from the, uh, cockpit, so we could say. But I think everybody that wanted to get on the meeting probably got on it. And I can guarantee you, you didn't miss much. If you, if you got in even an hour late, you didn't miss much. And this is gonna be, I, I've been told this is gonna be rebroadcast on YouTube TV. They just couldn't get it hooked up to it tonight, but it was also being broadcast on cable. And, uh, you know, the, what is it, Xfinity number nine, Comcast number nine and Verizon twenty-nine. So there's been plenty of ability. Nobody was gonna, nobody from the outside, uh, i- is going to be able to speak. So if you're on this meeting now and you're muted and there's no picture, your picture's not showing, it's not going to be either. So just so you know that, we're not required to do it because we're not taking any new information. So anyway, and this isn't, we'd, we'd go on through this meeting tonight and we got one more meeting scheduled for December eighteenth. So in the meantime, if you wanna see what you missed, which isn't much, um, watch YouTube whenever they get it up there. You'll have to check with Franklin TV. They're having trouble making the connection. All right, who's next? What are we, go ahead, Mark.
All right, I'm on number eighteen, prior to the issuance of building permits. This is just a reference to the Stormwater Pollution and Prevention Plan, the SWIP, uh, National, uh, Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPTs, and, um, O and M plans for stormwater drainage facilities. Um, the applicant has reported that their civil engineer submitted a hydrant flow test in the next paragraph during the public hearing, which indicated adequate water and that it was signed off on by Hancock Associates, so, yeah, paragraph. The flow test has already been done in paragraph nineteen. Uh, blasting paragraph twenty will be governed by state law. Pre-blast, pre-blasting will be offered, uh, to nearby residents as provided in the state regulations. Um, just some random, um, requirements. Organic fertilizers and pesticides will be exclusively used on the property. Number twenty-two, sodium-based deicing materials are prohibited. Number twenty-three, dumping of landscape debris, leaves, grass, clippings and brush on the property is prohibited. Twenty-four, the project shall not be gated. Twenty-five, all grading consistent with the approved plans. Um, the applicant has suggested that they be allowed to adjust grades to potentially lower buildings and reduce import materials consistent with the design, the development process. We talked about it earlier where the building commissioner can make a field adjustment. Um, it'll be up to the building commissioner to decide whether the, the lowering of the buildings is a field adjustment or an insubstantial change. Um, so I think that's a notable change suggested by the applicant. Uh, twenty-six, the applicant provide post-permit documents and plans required to the ZBA. So, uh, this would allow for, uh, the ZBA to give the applicant an idea of what inspections are going to cost. And there will also be some document review. Uh, the applicant is required to pay for that. And, um, once the applicant number twenty-seven has provided a complete set, the ZBA will have forty-five days to determine whether the, uh, peer comments, uh, to get peer review comments and determine whether the final design is okay. Um, if the ZBA determines that this twenty-eight in the post-permit documents and plans, the applicant gets notified expeditiously and the applicant has thirty days to cure. Twenty-nine, if deficiencies are not timely cured, the ZBA may determine that comp permit conditions aside and this applicant may avail itself of any right of appeal. Thirty, on the next, uh, my next page, any building equipped with an elevator shall program the elevator to return to the ground floor when a power outage occurs. Thirty-one, the applicant shall provide the ZBA and the Board of Health before the issuance of any CO that an adequate operation for the collection of solid waste and recycling has been submitted. No objection from the applicant. If an irrigation system is installed using municipal water, it may be done only in full compliance with town specifications.
And can we, um, say that the irrigation system would, if the irrigation system is installed, it must not use municipal water, but onsite water?
Um, you could say that, yeah. Um, I don't know that the water situation is, I don't, I don't know your water situation, so. But you've got, if you have them put in their own well, it's, it's competition for the drawdown of the Franklin system, so.
Or incentive to retain onsite?
I, I, I think they would be restricted more with, if they were to use the town water system because of the constant water bans, right? As opposed to them digging a well and being able to just water one of the.
Whenever they want, yeah. They got plenty of water there too. Everybody would agree with that.
Well, if they, if they're, if they're managing, uh, if they're managing it onsite, then there's plenty of water to use for irrigation.
I don't even think that after drill a well, I think they could put a well point down and get more than enough water to, to irrigate with. You know, I don't think there's gonna be that much grass area that they're gonna have to irrigate to begin with, but, you know, they're not gonna have that. I don't think they're gonna have rotators or anything else. I think it'll just be sprayheads that don't use less water than rotators, so, just my opinion.
I would rather leave in the, uh, full compliance with specifications of the town, um, because otherwise, you know, you, you've got them out there competing with you for groundwater. And if the town has no water to give, well, that's, that's in accordance with the specifications of the town.
Mister Chairman?
Go ahead, Gus.
So I interrupt you again. Could Attorney Bobrovsky address the open meeting concerns that citizens have right now?
I'm not aware of what the, uh, deficiencies were, Gus. I mean, I know that you got a email from somebody who couldn't get on and sat in the waiting room. I, I have no idea whether there were thirty of them or one of them.
There were several. There were several. Under the circumstances that the hearing has been closed and now they're in the meeting, just wanna make sure we're doing this properly.
They're not contributing anything. They're not saying anything. They're just listening.
They still have the right to observe and that, that's the nature of the open meeting law.
So I guess I would tell the residents, YouTube is down. They've been let into the meeting now. That's where we're at.
Gus, the meeting's being broadcast on cable also, on Xfinity, on Comcast and Verizon. And if they wanted to, they could have, well, if they could, if you didn't let them in, then you didn't let them in. But, you know, we've been doing this, but like I said, they're free to watch it whenever, uh, we were assured that it was gonna be up on, uh, YouTube as soon as the meeting was recorded and they were able to get in contact or make the, make the whatever connections they had to make to get it on YouTube. And I'm gonna tell you that when they watch it, they're not gonna, there's nothing that they can argue about that they missed.
So it says, uh, to view the live meeting remotely, this is your agenda.
Yeah.
Citizens, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel Nine and Verizon Channel Twenty-nine. Were those, how, how many of those things were up and running?
The two cables, um, Comcast and Verizon must be working. I don't know. I haven't heard anybody to say that they weren't working, you know, but we don't, I don't know how they checked that. We could check, Chris, Chris, oh, okay, Gus, you know, they are working?
YouTube is down.
No, I know. They didn't make, they couldn't make the connection. Chris couldn't get the connection to YouTube. I understand that. But there's still other ways that they can watch it. We're still out, we're still on, we're still broadcasting. So.
And was, uh, live broadcast on Comcast Channel Nine available and Verizon Channel Twenty-nine?
Yes.
But you need cable for that.
Well, you need an internet connection to watch it in any other way, so.
Meeting is being broadcast on cable, Comcast Nine and Verizon Twenty-nine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Gus, at, at approximately what point did the, um, snafu clear up?
Um, I let them into the meeting probably twenty minutes ago and some of the responses I'm getting, uh, many people are not on cable. They don't have cable.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Many people do not have cable, is what I'm hearing.
As opposed to internet?
Yeah, so they were banking on watching it on YouTube, which was down and they couldn't watch it cause they don't have cable and their YouTube connection was gone.
And so how did, how did we get them to join us? Did they finally?
Then the, the third option is to join via Zoom and they were in the waiting room. And missed the first part of the conversation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know that this is a daunting proposition, but we can always go back to the beginning and I can make a run through the conditions. There, very few of them were challenged and very few of them were adjusted. I'm happy to do that and I'm.
My recommendation through the chair that you do that, Mark.
Okay, that'll cure the defect. So why don't? Um, I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna go back to the beginning now. I'm gonna finish. And then we'll go back to the beginning and I'm gonna pick a point at which. And then we'll go back to the beginning and I'm going to pick a point at which everybody was likely on board. And I think that would.
You go halfway through B, general conditions, I would imagine.
Yeah, why, why don't I um? Do all of A and, and B again, if we're just about to enter into C.
Okay.
And um, we'll make our way quickly through the rest of B. And I'm going to assume. With twenty minutes of full participation. When Gus opened them, uh let them in from the waiting room, that.
Well, they don't have full participation. They're just able to.
Know that they were, that they were, they were let in. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Mark, I'm hearing that seven twenty is when everyone got let in.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's only uh.
Well, that's twelve minutes ago.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, then we'll go back through A and B.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go through A and B again. You start with.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
All right, let's start C.
Um, I, wait, I have one, just since, well, since we're going through B and I had, I had a comment in my notes. On C, but I see it's also referenced in B thirteen. Uh, structures and site improvements in terms of um. Uh applicant shall bear the cost of maintenance repairs, replacement, plowing. Uh, also responsible for the sidewalks that are being added along East Central Street.
Explain.
The town plows those already, you know?
The only plow where there's um. There's, there's certain areas in town where they plow near schools. But there are, there are multiple sidewalks along developments that are just overrun with weeds. And full of snow in the wintertime that no one maintains. And so I want to make sure if. The applicant is adding sidewalk along their property frontage um and to the adjacent property that it does get maintained. And so that's referenced in B thirteen and in C seventeen, I think.
B thirteen.
Seems reasonable.
Okay, I'll just add sidewalks.
Okay. There's sidewalks on the site, but then there's also the sidewalk along East Central Street.
And is the Central Street sidewalk in the layout of the state or is it off the layout?
It's in the layout of the state.
Well, I don't know that that's, you know, I don't know that the town.
The town plows the sidewalk.
Already?
Yes.
Well, there's no sidewalk there right now.
The sidewalk's all the way up to uh Franklin Commons. And I'm pretty sure they go that far and then turn around and go back up past Dunkin' Donuts. Remember, they plow it when they can. You know, it's not, I guess, like you say, they probably do around the schools a lot quicker. Well, they do this, they do these sidewalks.
All right, I've, I've made notes to that effect. I'll talk about that. Uh, I don't know that we can order somebody to go into the state highway layout, but if the town is doing it. Uh, you know, then it may not be an issue because the town is doing it. But the private applicant is a different story.
Well, if the private applicant is saying that they will install a new sidewalk. Along the frontage of their development to four forty East Central Street. Then that should be maintained as part of their site.
It's not your jurisdiction to say that though, because it's state property. So we'll, let, let me figure it out. We got two weeks and I'll look into it and see what we've got.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, construction inspection and bonding, this is new condition section C. Uh, the Z B A and its agents may enter the property as long as they observe all health and safety standards. The applicant will pay all of the Z B A's prior and outstanding peer review and legal fees ASAP. If the applicant, uh, the applicant shall also pay for all post-permit review. Post-permit inspections and post-permit legal fees associated with document review. And there's an escrow account currently established under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G. And they're going to put the money in there so that the Z B A can draw it down. And they've got to keep it reasonably up to speed. Bruce and I were looking for that condition about a month and a half ago with regard to one of your previous forty Bs, and so I wanted to make sure it was in there. Um, number three, the applicant shall comply with orders by the building commissioner regarding. As I said, the building commissioner is the chief enforcement agent. Number four, working activities within the wetland buffer zones shall be governed by the Concom. Uh, this is under the state regulation, which is cited. Number four, to the work done by the applicant on private ways within the property, no C O shall be issued until the applicant substantially completed. The drainage and utility work pertinent to any parts of the property for which an occupancy permit is to be issued. And has installed a binder course of pavement uh within those parts of the property. So if they're going to go. Forward with a security uh guarantee, a performance guarantee. They've got to get to at least this stage before they can ask for the C O and the, and the security has been provided to the town. Number six, to the extent landscaping is not completed, they can ask for satisfactory surety to be accepted in lieu. Number seven, the work to be secured shall include any landscape and fencing along the limit of work boundary. Number eight, in addition, the applicant shall provide surety sufficient to lowman seat any disturbed areas. The amount shall be based on the cost estimate of the remaining work. Number nine, prior to the issuance of any building permit, site and engineering plans shall be signed and sealed by a Massachusetts P E. And a Massachusetts registered landscape architect and filed with the Z B A and shall include the following. Final grading and drainage and utilities plans, stormwater, SWIP. Uh, notes which address mitigation of sedimentation. A letter from the project architect confirming the project complies with the A A B regulations. Final landscape plan and a blasting plan.
Question.
Shoot.
Uh, why don't we require architectural building plans signed and sealed by a. Uh, registered architect and a letter from project P E. Stating that the project complies with um uh stretch codes, stretch energy codes.
Well, let me ask Gus and Joe to make a comment there.
Hampton sealed architectural plans will be required for building permit. So it's a separate, separate and distinct and compliance with the Mass Building Code is. Outside the jurisdiction of the Z B A and totally within Gus's. Purview.
So Gus gets on whether or not we put it in the decision is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it just seemed like a specific, like everything else is listed out, but um, but that. I was just curious.
Yeah, nor, normally these plans, these, this documentation doesn't accompany a building permit. It's the nature of forty B and the requirement of preliminary plans that requires that we do. That we require final plans be submitted. Um, that are site-related landscape, stormwater, things that. Aren't normally part of the building permit process.
Through you, Mister.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Gus.
In most cases, Z B A asks for um a. A design, but not plans when a variance or a special permit might be granted. And in this case. They would have to adhere to. The designs that they've, they've submitted already. If he does make that change. Or if he does make a change, then it could be an insubstantial or substantial change. And that's on A J or the proponent.
So is there any change to number nine, A through E that you would recommend or Joe you would recommend? Or is it good to go?
I would recommend a lighting plan.
Lighting plan. And then because this special permit, the, the comprehensive permit is a different process. Am I correct in saying there's no design review step?
No.
There are boards that incorporate design review into the comprehensive permit hearing process. But it's, it's, I don't think it's. I mean, it's probably a fifty-fifty proposition from town, you know, from town to town, project to project.
What, what's important to note is that all of the review that we, that we'll do of these final plans. Is not a subsequent approval, that it is or, or introduction, introduction of new materials. It's merely to, to verify that. The plans are in substantial compliance with the, with the approved preliminary plans. And the conditions of the comprehensive permit. So the, the wording on this has to be tailored in such a manner that, that it doesn't. So if you wanted to send them to design review board, because now they have full architectural plans. For them to be approved, that would be a problem.
Yeah, that, that, all of the powers here are vested in the Z B A, so.
How do we then maintain? Compliance with design standards? And uh Gus, can you please unmute Archie? Like if, if the powers are all with the Z B A. Are we reviewing the design? How does that work?
It generally, if a board wants to review the architectural aspects of the building, it engages a peer reviewer. And that's information that's submitted and, and received during the public hearing process.
We can't use our town. Uh, design review commission?
Our, our design review, our design review commission is only a recommendation.
I, I, I know, but in, you know, in the master plan, we've even said that they should be elevated to have more oversight um.
At, at such time that they do, then I'd be happy to send it to them.
So then, all right, let's say we're during the process, the design gets more fleshed out beyond concept level. Uh, do we hire a peer review? Architect to confirm that it's meeting our town design standards?
We could, but I'd rely on the building commissioner to make the first call.
Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
It really is part of the substantial or insubstantial change process. You can't add a new standard after the fact. Um, you can certainly have it reviewed if you desire. Uh, by the building commissioner or a peer review architect to make sure that the. Design is consistent, or if you believe it's a substantial change, to advise you at that point solely on the changes. But you can't, you can't at that point uh, uh, go backwards and have, you know, a design review of the entire design of the project. Any review would only be for the, for the proposed change if you find it substantial.
I don't recall that we ever talked about it, Peter, but do you know if there's designs that have already been done? Probably tell you what the texture of the material is outside and the trim and all that other stuff.
He, he submitted elevations in our application, building up elevations from day one and.
Okay, you didn't put material, you didn't put materials in it, uh, what kind of material you were going to use or what kind of paint you were going to use or anything like that.
I haven't seen it. I mean, he could, he could be doing everything in vinyl siding when we want it to be brick or whatever. It's never been called out. We've never seen it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just concept elevations. I mean, they, they are quite nice, but what protects us from them being? You know, yeah, cheap vinyl. Or, you know, the, just flat scale.
Lie, lie down. Lie down.
Well, I, it, it, it's a question, but it, it's, this is again. Because of experience, I'm not saying I'm the last word and Mark is also equally or more experienced, but. And even as Joe said, the plans that have been submitted, submitted and reviewed and approved, well-approved if you approve them, you know, when you vote. Are um, are consistent with what's required with forty B. So the mechanism in your protection is if. Um, something that's submitted to the building commissioner, he believes isn't, isn't consistent. With the approval, then his first determination it would be, is it insignificant? Um, and if he feels it should go to the Z B A to make the decision as to whether it's insubstantial. Or substantial, then that's what would happen. And as I said a minute ago, if it is deemed substantial, that's the point at which. Within reason, of course, you would have the prerogative to hire, you know, some design review consultant to advise you both on consistency. And if, if, if it's a, a change that you would approve.
But I think the proper way to have done it would have been to do it in the. You know, you, just, just as you hire Mister Pesnell to look at civil and Mister Finland to look at traffic. There are people that are available to sit in as uh forty B consultants on architecture. And they make a report and they're uh, you know, their guidance is usually uh incorporated into the permit.
So is this another example of something we should have, would have done during this process?
I don't think, I mean, my recollection is that Franklin has not done it before. Um, Bruce, you could help me out here.
We, we've never done it before. There's a lot of things that we haven't done before, but I can tell you one thing. I don't see any buildings that are rotting apart, falling down, windows falling out or anything like that. Everything that's been built has been pretty good. We haven't had any, we haven't had any issues with uh, with the environmental things like uh water, uh retention. And anything else like that, anything, everything that's been built in Franklin has been built to standards. And Gus can, Gus has been around a long time inspecting the stuff, so he can answer all the stuff about the siding and whatever else, but. We didn't pick it out. Nobody brought it up until now. And like Mark says, that, that ship has sailed. You know, they, they got some elevations and that's it. Go ahead, Gus.
Sure, no problem. I would say that that's true, Mister Chairman. Um. There hasn't been anything built in Franklin that I'm aware of that has had problems like that. Occasionally it happens, people maintain their buildings and usually take it down, fix it. And do it the right way if they've done it the wrong way to begin with.
If I could just add, and I know it doesn't mean that much, I think, to, to what you're getting at um, in slang, but uh. Cube three studios are, is our architect, they're an award-winning architect, very reputable in Massachusetts, New England.
I, I'll stop you right there. I know Cube three, I do like the work. Um, it's. I'm, I'm reacting to recent developments we've had in the town that people, residents. Um. Master plan committee, many people felt are ugly. And uh, there is a desire to elevate the design standards in the town of Franklin. Um, to do things that we've never done before, like question designs. Uh, I think the Cube three concept elevations are attractive. Uh, but that's it. They're just pretty pictures right now. And as the project gets fleshed out. How do we make sure that um, those details come through?
Well, that's.
And that's why I ask, is it the Z B A reviewing it or is there, can we say that there is a, a process?
It's, it's. If you're for the building permit, Gus determines consistency with the plans of record.
Correct.
Okay. So then it would be uh for the building commissioner to say. If things aren't matching the concept elevations. Then that gets raised to the question of it's as insubstantial or substantial change. then that gets raised to the question of it's a insubstantial or substantial change.
Correct.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could speak through you.
Go ahead, Gus. Yeah, go ahead.
These design standards on everything that's built, it's, it's construction-related. If it isn't approved by the ICC, which is the International Code Council, it doesn't go up. Um, there's an evaluation on most products that are put out there by lumberyards, by suppliers, manufacturers. Nothing to my knowledge has ever been put up in Franklin that didn't meet those standards, and they're pretty tough. Um, vinyl siding, people, some people don't like it. Um, it's been used for years and it's held up well. Um, and it wouldn't be sold or sold in the United States if it didn't meet certain standards.
Even the stuff the Toll Brothers built that you could break into with a utility knife met the standards, correct?
That's an example of the houses in town that were built that way. And to be honest with you, I've done a lot of inspections with, for Toll Brothers over the years. And even those homes, which people generally pick apart, are very well-built. They passed the smell test and they pass code and they got certificates of occupancy. And they're still standing today.
And remember that um, affordable housing is a brinksmanship between quality and price. So you're, you're trying to build as much of this as possible and you, you want it obviously to last as long as possible, but you, you can't throw gold at it. Doesn't, it doesn't pan out that way.
This is me learning the process, right? That we care about the, the site plan and not the architecture.
I'm on number ten. Prior to starting any activity, the contractor will hold a pre-construction meeting with the DPW Building Inspector, CONCOM agent, Highway Super, uh, to review the decision. So this is a really important thing because it sets the schedule for the order of work to be done. Uh, placement of wetlands, uh, buffer, uh, you know, mitigation measures. And then the order in which the building will actually take place, when inspections will be scheduled. So it's a very necessary condition. Prior to starting the authorized activity number eleven, we want the applicant to give the building inspector company affiliation, municipal lien certificate, certi- certification that all federal, state and local licenses have been obtained, dig safe proof that street signage is in place and forty-eight hours of, of notice before the activity commences. Number twelve, during construction, the applicant will cause all erosion control measures to be in place and secured. The, if there is debris in construction materials that have to be removed and disposed of, the ZBA will be notified in writing of the final disposition of the materials. Number thirteen, an as-built plan will be required within ninety days of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Number fourteen, catch basins will be cleaned at the end of the construction. Work thereafter responsible, uh, the, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining uh, in accordance with generally accepted practices. Number fifteen, a plan to implement adequate erosion and sedimentation control measures uh, will be submitted to the, uh, by the applicant to the CONCOM for approval under the state regs. Said measures will be maintained throughout the project duration. Sixteen, any soil testing will be done by a registered professional engineer or soil evaluator. The applicant number seventeen will be permanently responsible for the following aspects of the project. This is just a, a little bit lengthier list of the things that are in another condition earlier. Plowing, sanding, snow removal, maintaining the site. Uh, a regular schedule for maintenance, repairing and maintaining all onsite roadways. Maintaining any and all easements, if there are any on the plans, and site lighting. Number eighteen, prior to the issuance of the first CO, the applicant will obtain approval from the postmaster for any location to be used for mailboxes and parcel delivery. Number nineteen, the applicant's final construction plans shall provide the construction of the project in accordance with all laws, regulations regarding noise, vibration, dust, sedimentation and blocking of town roads. Hmm, there will be aprons at the entry points to shake the dust off or knock the dust off of the heavy vehicles that are traveling. And there will be a schedule for spraying water when necessary to keep dust down. Number twenty-one, reasonable means will be used to minimize inconvenience to residents of the general area. Number twenty-two, uh, there's a transfer provision in the HAC regulations that's cited there. Transfer is generally under the control of the subsidizing agency, but notice has to be provided to the ZBA. It used to be that the ZBA was also had jurisdiction to control transfer, but the HAC changed that many years ago. Number twenty-three, building construction may begin simultaneously with the commencement of construction, but no occupancy permit shall issue until compliance with state code has been achieved. The last two sections of the decision, D and E, have to do with.
Can, can I raise a question here?
True.
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, what about the cleaning up of the site? So currently the site, uh, from what I've heard has got, you know, like abandoned automobiles there, engine oil, whatnot. Where is that going to be regulated and, and is it in our, our, uh, conditions here to be taken care of?
Good question. Joe, have we encountered this before?
Um, I think the, the site plans are, um, through the conservation commission process, uh, they have committed to doing a lot of restoration uh, to the site in areas that they're not actively developing. So they're, these buffers from, from the wetlands to the, kind of the developed site have all been detailed with regards to how they're going to clean those up, how they're going to, um, um, restore those, vegetate those. Uh, Brika might be able to expand upon, upon the conditions that might be coming down in the conservation commission order of conditions that are, that will, that will, uh, that will address um, those issues. Obviously, within the site proper, the areas of the building, areas of the parking lots. Um, they're going to have to have uh, geotechnical engineers on, on board to, to make sure that the, uh, any, any materials that are not suitable are, are removed and that the fill that's brought in is, is clean and proper for the, the intended uses. Um, and that's, that's standard protocol. Um, so I don't, I don't know that. I, I guess, I guess the question would be to Brika, i- if she feels the plans that, um, the conservation commission is, is considering approving uh, and issuing an order, um, take care of that, because I, I think that's, that's the biggest issue, Archie, that would, would be um, that could fall through the cracks, is the areas that aren't actively being developed that are in need of cleanup. Uh, you know, and, and I think those are pretty much the, these buffers, these areas between the, the pond and the stream and the wetlands and the, and, and the limit of work, the limit of development, if you will.
Would you like me to jump in now? Snow is a good segue.
Go ahead, Greg.
Perfect. Um, yeah, I think Joe, um, encapsulated it pretty well. Um, CONCOM is looking to ensure that the resource areas jurisdictional under the Wetlands Protection Act, which is most everything there anyways, um, will be maintained and protected as well. Um, we actually were having, going to have a restoration plan presentation, um, at seven PM today, considering ZBA is running now almost uh, it at eight. Um, CONCOM has adjourned. For anybody on this call, you're more than welcome to attend our meeting on December eleventh to go over the restoration plan that the applicant has provided. Um, that is a special ask from the commission, considering how, um, dilapidated and degraded the site currently is. Um, so we are forward-thinking, trying to improve the site conditions. And then as far as, um, future protection, as I mentioned, we are looking to condition, um, appropriate signage, um, restrictions and an operation and maintenance plan to, um, protect those areas in perpetuity, to make sure that those areas are, um, successful in perpetuity. And then we have specific parameters um, to ensure that. For example, seventy-five percent coverage of native species um, and monitoring with two growing seasons, um, even before certificate of compliance. So, happy to review those, um, in a public hearing with the commission at a later date. I don't want to speak too much to what we're, um, drafting without their attendance.
But this will be something that the conservation commission will be definitely tackling.
And is it something we should have in our decision that it needs to be done as per the conservations? I mean, do we even need that in there?
I think it's covered in, in one of the earlier conditions that requires compliance with all other.
Jurisdictions?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was something specifically about compliance with an order of conditions under three ten CMR ten. That was.
That is, sorry.
I was muted. Yes, we will be conditioning. Um, I think we have about sixty-four, sixty-five conditions.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, C four, work and activities within the wetlands as defined by three ten CMR ten shall be governed by the conservation commission.
Yeah.
How does, how does this condition in our decision? Does it conflict with a waiver request that uh, seeks to not have the oversight of CONCOM?
No, the, the conservation commission has oversight under, under the state act, under three ten CMR ten. Um, so they retain that jurisdiction under the state act. They're, they're the administrators of the State Wetlands Protection Act. Um.
And I understood that was why.
Yeah, you're retaining jurisdiction under the local wetlands bylaw.
Okay. The, the waivers that CONCOM requested we deny, I thought that was removing their oversight.
Well, that is, is contrary to state law. So when we get to the waivers, we'll, that the, the whole purpose of the comprehensive permit is for the ZBA to step into the shit of any and all local boards with regulations. The only regulations that continue to be effective would be the building code, title file, and the state conservation actions through DEP.
Okay.
Uh, anything sub, um, superfluous would be your job. So if they say, if the conservation makes a recommendation that you leave their authority intact to do this, that, or the other thing procedurally, it's, it's not consistent with the comprehensive permit statute. They can make a recommendation to you on the substance of the regulation there is a waiver request for. It's your decision. It's not their decision.
Okay. That helps, helps me. Is, was there the reason they asked us to deny that waiver? Is, is it because they thought they wouldn't still be overseeing the the mass DEP? They're, they're still involved in, in reviewing.
I can, I can pop in here if, if you don't mind. Um, so to, um, council's point, there are two buckets that the commission is reviewing under. The State Wetlands Protection Act, or typically reviews under, sorry, let me, let me say that. Typically reviews under it, which is the State Wetlands Protection Act and the bylaw. As your content experts have stated time and time again, right? By design, a local bylaw has to be more stringent than the state. It can't be less stringent than the state. That doesn't work that way. So CONCOM has asked that local bylaw be maintained. CONCOM understands it's with ZBA. Um, of course, they're going to ask that, right? That's their edict. I think that, that's no surprise to anybody here. So what CONCOM, I think where the confusion has come from is that if ZBA maintains the bylaw, the, the wetlands protection bylaw, let's call it that. Uh, or let's call it what it is, Wetlands Protection bylaw, if they maintain that, and let's say ZBA doesn't waive the buffer zone, um, section. So a zero to twenty-five foot no-touch is put in place. The, um, restrictions within the twenty-five to fifty-foot buffer zone stays in place. That is going to change the applicant's site plan. ZBA would force then the applicant to change their site plan, which would change, or not change, which would ensure me, um, sorry, I'm very overly tired, um, which would then continue the review with conservation under the Wetlands Protection Act. So whatever change ZBA makes, it's going to volley back to conservation. There is no one or the other as it relates to this project. Conservation is going to be involved no matter what pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act. All conservation wants to know is if ZBA is going to um, maintain the bylaw. Does that make a little bit more sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask, um, Joe to take section D by the hand here. What I attempted to do was read closely Joe's November nineteenth peer review letter. And embedded in it were a number of different Joe called out. For example, the conflict with regard to the area of buildings fifty-four seventy-two, the number parking spaces that are being provided and snow storage conflict with parking. So I, I attempted to ex, um, to, uh, excerpt Joe's comments and more or less reframe them into conditions. And there's been considerable by the applicant with regard to my work. But I'm gonna, I want to let Joe take this apart since he was the one who wrote in large, with my editing, uh, section D.
Okay, so, um, the first one, section D, one has to do with the, the A and R plan. Um, and a preliminary A and R plan was, was submitted to the, to the board, to the ZBA. And what this is, is it, it's a subdivision plan, approval not required, normally endorsed by the, the planning board. Um, uh, an approval not required plan does not create building lots per se, or, or it, it does not create, uh, roadways. Um, it creates, it, it subdivides property. In this case, they are subdividing parcels to transfer to neighboring properties. Uh, there's various, um, slivers that are, that are being cordoned off to this. Um, it's not necessarily creating the lot that, um, the, the project is on because that lot exists. It's just carving some pieces off. It, within the convoy, it, but it is related to the comprehensive permit, so it is within the purview of the ZBA to act in, in, in the shoes of the planning board to, to endorse that plan. So this, this condition is basically saying, within your approval process, you are, you are a, approving this subdivision plan, um, and you will endorse it, which means, you know, even the, having the entire board or the chairman signing it so that that, uh, a, a Mylar copy of that plan, so that it can be recorded at the registry of deeds and relied upon. The, the applicant has, has added some specificity to it, uh, and. And I understand that a Mylar has already been submitted to the, to the board for consideration of endorsement. So I have no, no problem with the, the additions that they've, that they've added here. It just, it's putting specificity as to what, what the, what the purpose of the A and R is and, and the creation of parcels A and, and B and, and what, what those are and C and what those are intended for. Any questions with regards to that?
Bruce, you and I had a, a brief conversation on the phone today about parcel B and you.
Oh, the piece that they want to donate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the town's interested in it. It's nothing but wetlands. You know, and it's, it'll be landlocked. I don't see the advantage of town taking.
And they've got.
If the town does not desire parcel B or does not grant approval for the, for the deeding of parcel B, the applicant is not in violation of any conditions and shall maintain parcel B as part of the property. So.
There we go.
It, it, it's, you know, a, a, the, the, a subdivision plan does not transfer land. It's merely a vehicle to show parcels that can be transferred. So if the transfer never happens, then they just retain ownership of parcel B and the main piece. No harm, no foul. It's not, it's not as if there, there needs to be a change to the plan. They would just retain ownership of parcel B. There's no commitment in you endorsing the plan to do anything. You're just, you're, you're not even approving the plan. You're endorsing that it does not require, it does not fall under subdivision control, which is a requirement prior to them recording it. Any transfer is merely using this plan as a reference. So if there's a deed for parcel A that goes out to the butter, the deed references this plan. That's recorded at the registry. If there's no transfer on parcel B, they just retain ownership.
What is the purpose of parcel C?
I thought parcel C is going to another neighbor. We get.
I'm happy, I'm happy to clarify parcel C is being needed to the owner of four, five, four East Central, which is the same owner as the seller of the property. So he's retaining some land to increase his backyard a little bit as a part of the private transaction and agreement that we made together.
So the A and R plan creates both parcels C and B.
A, B, and C.
The town may express a preference not to take parcel B. You've provided what will happen. Parcel C is going up, the owner of four fifty-four East Central. So that's not a transfer to the government. So that's the, that's what you're proposing here. So, okay, can we, it sounds to me, Joe, like we can leave it alone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who, who makes the decision about parcel B?
Um, there is a provision in here that says no further approval by the town shall be required. I don't think that that's necessarily consistent with state law. Otherwise, everybody would dump unwanted parcels on a municipal government. I think there has to be a further approval by the town to accept the deed.
Janelle, I haven't seen anybody from the town come forward saying they were willing to accept it.
Yeah, so that's why.
You asked the question, you asked the question early on. What was that parcel good for? Absolutely nothing. It's landlocked and it's in the swamp. Or it's wetlands. I don't know if it's completely underwater, but there's a lot of, you know, we even, I mentioned at the break, she said the same thing.
If it's, if it's helpful just to explain the context of where that came from, it was discussed during the lip review process prior to coming to the board.
No, you can't. AJ, you can't introduce any new evidence, okay? You did it during the lip, but you didn't do it during the ZBA meeting, so you can't do it now.
No, understood. I thought we talked about that in previous public hearing. Sorry.
It's been mentioned a couple of times, but I don't, you know, you didn't get into the roots of it where it came from, you know? I suppose it's up to Jamie. If he wants to keep it, he can keep it. But, you know, I don't know what you're, I don't know what the town's going to do, especially be, is it landlocked?
And in the chat, Ricolai says she believes it'd be Jamie's call. It would expand the town forest, but it is all wet and inaccessible without a boardwalk.
Yeah.
And I think early on I had asked if there was going to be walking paths and the answer was no.
I, I really think all of this additional information is, is not germane to what you're being asked to do, which is endorse an, an approval not required plan. What they do with it. I think Attorney Bobrowski just, just stated if the town was going to take it, would take a, a further action, could possibly even need town meeting. But transfer of property from one entity, from the applicant to, to another entity is, is a private transaction. It's, your board's not going to, all you're being asked to do is endorse the subdivision plan. And I think you can do that. What happens to the.
At a minimum, I'm going to strike at no cost. That's fine, but I'm going to strike no further approval of the town shall be required. Because I, I, I would prefer to say subject to applicable law, and I do believe there is applicable law. But I'll talk about this with Attorney Freeman and it, we may take Joe's suggested edit to go back to the fourth line of this to heart, but we'll see what happens. Go ahead with two, Joe.
So two has to do with the southeast corner and, and the mitigation area. So under, under condition two, the applicant has added discussion on the retaining wall that was done in the substantial cost of that retention of the trees, calling it this eastern buffer. And my point was to, to make sure that that buffer be retained. And that, given the question as to the sufficiency of the parking proximate to the buildings and snow storage, that that be kind of solidified in a, in a condition. I, I guess I don't have any problem with the additional language that they're doing. It's more of a finding than a condition. Here. I, I don't even see the need for, for the entirety of, of number two as a, as a condition because it's not compelling them to do anything. It's memorializing what they've, what they've proposed to do, which is on the plans and the plans should be sufficient. They have to comply with the plans. Which, which call out a limit of work, call out a limit of pavement, call out retention of the trees and supplementation of the trees with landscaping.
Throughout the process, we've talked about solid vinyl fence as part of the buffer. I've requested an eight-foot fence. And there's been a promise of additional trees on the site as well as on budding properties. Where does that get captured?
Janelle, I actually had a discussion with Mark about this earlier, and I think we're going to take that up next week when we talk about the mitigation aspects.
So that doesn't get captured in the decision?
It will, but not tonight.
Okay.
I, I had heard, this is my understanding of those proposed measures. One is three or have requested additional landscaping or there's been discussion about neighbors.
There's been discussion about a fence. You know, and the neighbors want a fence. And then there was discussion about that the applicant offered, at least one of the applicants, some money to put their own trees in wherever they felt that they were needed. That was my, that was my impression. So, you know, when it comes to mitigation, you know, if you can give it to one, you give it to the other two also, so.
And is the applicant's inclusion of a hundred thousand and a hun, and another thirty-five thousand, is this intended to be totaling the mitigation which I see you've pointed out in a later paragraph?
Yeah, the five hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah. So thi, this is one and two of the total of five sixty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Should the full board be seeing the proposed edits by the applicant?
I don't have a problem with it. I, I didn't get them until very late, so.
You send them out to us tomorrow, Mark?
I shall.
Yeah, because we don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, five sixty-seven.
So question, the answer to, to the question on the supplemental planting and the fence. The revised landscape plan sheet L two point two has the supplemental planting, shows the existing trees and proposes a six-foot tall vinyl fence. So if the board's pleasure is to have that be an eight-foot vinyl fence, then it should add a specific condition that that requires that to be modified to an eight.
Joe, does it show how far the fence goes on the plants?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all.
Easternly edge?
Yep, the entire easterly edge.
Okay.
And then it does go around the other side of the property, right? Though not an, a solid architectural fence?
No.
There's no, no, there's no fence or no, it's not a solid vinyl?
No, there's no fence. It's just along that easterly property line.
The a butter on the west had requested a fence. I think it was our, our first hearing. We received a letter.
I think it was, Janelle, I think it was from the car dealership. They were concerned about people cutting across to get over to Big Wye.
Yep.
And they happen on a piece of land that goes right out to the, back to the wetlands back there too, so.
We, we incorporated a, a fence along the left side at his request. It's on the plans.
That's what I thought. I thought there, there was a fence. I just wasn't sure about the final proposal of the materiality and the style. Is it chain link?
On the left side, it's called out as chain link black. He wasn't, he wasn't concerned about screening. It was solely a, a measure to just have a fence along the left side.
How tall is it?
I, I don't have the plan in front of me. I'd have to look back. It's probably the standard six-foot tall.
Okay, some of this I'll be discussing with the applicant's counsel over the course of the next week and we'll, we'll report back.
Okay, so three. It was calling for preparing a revised plan of that southeast area. Revised plan shall include snow storage areas that do not decrease the available parking that are located in areas to promote snow melt into the proposed stormwater system that comply with any restrictions imposed by the Conservation Commission and a total of at least five percent of the paved areas on site. Furthermore, in, in the events, snow storage at any time occupies parking spaces and impedes circulation. Snow must be removed from the site and disposed of in accordance with the applicable regulations. Any landscaping damage by snow shall be replaced each spring.
Since this condition calls into account the one point two spaces per unit on that side. This is why I was asking about when we talk through the waivers because there's a waiver that asks for parking spaces that are less than eight feet and eight and a half feet wide.
Less than nine feet, yeah?
And no, it says less than eight feet. And that's not acceptable.
I thought they were proposing eight and a half feet wide.
The waiver says, waiver twelve point A says portion of parking spaces are less than eight feet and eight and a half feet wide. All standard parking stalls are eighteen feet in length and compact stalls are sixteen feet in length. And I am suggesting that only compact stalls are less than nine feet wide.
Compact are eight by sixteen.
Right.
Standards are nine by eighteen or eight.
Correct.
They, yeah, they have standard spaces that are eight and a half by eighteen. They have a hundred and thirty-two of those. They have a hundred and fifty-five nine by eighteen. And then they have fifty-six compact that are eight by sixteen. So the waiver would be on the hundred and thirty-two that are eight and a half feet wide versus nine.
Well, I guess maybe there's a, there's a typo in here that says portion of parking spaces are less than eight feet?
No, but, yeah, that, they don't, they don't, they don't have any less than eight. They have the compacts that are eight. And this, and the kind of in between compact and standard that are eight and a half by eighteen. So, yeah.
Which is very tight given vehicle sizes these days.
I would not disagree. But they have.
This change, sorry, this change was made and submitted to the board, I think, October twenty-second letter. And this was done to increase the eastern buffer area along the east side for the benefit of the butters. It's only the east side parking lot that has eight and a half foot wide spaces, which is sufficient to fit vehicles. So we did request that waiver. That is, that is a type, a typo.
Yeah, I'm, you know, regarding the parking on this, you know, not to, not to get into discussion beyond what we're here to do. I was, I was actually, you know, fine when reviewing that plan for the eight and a half foot space. It is tight. It, it, it's similar to any shortcoming in the, in the total parking is going to manifest itself as nuisance and not a safety problem. The nuisance will be borne by the management company. People complaining that their cars are being dinged because people open their doors into the other car because the parking space is only eight or eight and a half feet wide. So trying not to, trying to keep it within the confines of, you know, is this a, a nuisance problem for the management company or a safety problem? In which, you know, people are going to be parking out in East Central Street, which I don't think is the case. In any event, what I tried to encapsulate in the condition is that should they, should they find the parking to be insufficient? And they want to add it back, that anything that would interfere or, or encroach into that easterly buffer, I suggest the board deem that a substantial change right from the get-go and not, not worry about rendering a decision in the future because of the implications of encroaching into that easterly buffer where that was such a contentious issue and, and the mitigation you know, the mitigation offered by the applicant to increase that buffer. you know, the the mitigation offered by the applicant to increase that buffer, to put the retaining wall in, to retain the existing trees, to augment the trees, all of that could be um would be impacted should they should they come forth with a plan to add the parking back to that side of the drive?
Okay. Uh, number five, sweep it daily during construction. The applicant wants to add along the extent of the site's frontage. Is there any other need for sweeping besides the frontage? No?
No, just the front.
Number six, truck turning plans. Uh, they're the applicants requesting this entire condition to be deleted.
Reason being that it was done, I believe.
Oh, didn't explain why.
Part of the record, yeah.
Yeah, the the latest set of plans um does have the SU thirty truck turning plan and the fire truck turning plans.
So you don't have a problem with me taking it out, Joe?
No.
Okay, number seven.
That's the earthwork one.
Uh, no, the applicant estimated, oh, that's the earthwork, right? They haven't objected to this.
Yep, so they just have to pro- provide the earthwork and then um yeah. And the trucking, trucking routes. So the, so they're looking for the quantity of fill, quantity of um import, export, trucks into daily, weekly trucks anticipated, um the time, the the duration of of that operation, and then the trucking routes.
Okay, let's go to the the uh study for the sewer.
So the study for the sewer, the um the way that I had laid it out initially was um requiring the applicant to do the study. Subsequent to that, um, we were, we were given the an actual proposal from the town's engineer uh with a price tag of thirty two thousand dollars. And uh it's my understanding from the town engineer that he wants his engineer to do it at the thirty two thousand. So so this, the applicant is um edited this to to say that they'll provide the sum of thirty two thousand dollars to pay the cost of the study um to evaluate the municipal pump station. And then add the language of said study determines this that the sewer infrastructure improvements are required in in order to pro- process the wastewater generated from the project, the applicant shall forthwith prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy either one construct an onsite uh holding tank for off-peak pumping, which is currently on the plan. Or to provide additional funds to the town uh for the pump station upgrades. Um, said some which shall not exceed the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If the applicant chooses option two, the applicant shall not be required to install the sewer holding tank. I I believe they stole the hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Grove Street as a upset limit of that. I have not had an opportunity to talk to the town engineer as to whether or not he concurs that that's an appropriate upset limit.
What's the approximate cost of the whole?
Of the holding tank?
Yeah.
Uh, it's usually around three dollars a gallon, and I think it's thirty five thousand dollars, thirty five thousand gallons.
You need a pump to go with that. You need two pumps to go with that, don't you?
Yeah, in including that, so it's probably about a, it's probably about a hundred somewhere around a hundred, hundred and hundred, hundred and fifty. So I think they're they're kind of hedging their bets and saying.
Yeah.
We'll put the tank in or we'll contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the municipal pump station upgrade.
And are both of those numbers thirty five, I'm sorry, thirty two and a hundred and fifty being counted towards the mitigation?
The the this should not, this is not mitigation. This is necessary infrastructure upgrades to support the project.
It was, it was added into Grove Street. They they had, they had mitigation plus they paid for the sewer and stuff too. They had to do up to a hundred fifty. They wanted to take it out of the mid, they wanted to take it out of the mitigation that they offered. But uh they agreed after leave the mitigation alone and to add the hundred and fifty thousand towards the sewer.
Well, it, there's a paragraph that they've added that the total sum due to town Franklin for mitigation as described in this decision shall not exceed five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars and I'm not and it specifically refers to condition seven above which is the one we just read. So I'm guessing that, correct me if I'm wrong, that this thirty two plus one fifty, one eighty two is being counted towards the five sixty seven.
That's not the way Grove Street was was approved.
Well, I'll confirm that with their counsel, but my, I think Joe's already expressed his uh understanding that this is, this is a not, this is not mitigation. It's not above and beyond. It's something you absolutely have to do.
Something they gotta do, yeah.
Quite, I have a question on this one. Um, I read through the scope for the study and it talks about um reviewing the flow calculations uh provided by the developer and analyzing the existing pump station and writing a summary letter. It does not include any um proposed upgrades to the existing pump station as part of their thirty two thousand dollars.
That's just for the study. My understanding is that's just for the study. That's what they got.
They're basically just saying whether the pump station can meet it or not.
Yeah, and then they'll decide if they want to put a holding tank or they want to upgrade the station. They may still have to upgrade the station based upon, you know, what's going on.
Right, right. I I I think the 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 studies, the study has to have a conclusion. So they, they're going to first verify that the numbers that the applicant is giving them for the added flow to the pump station are correct. And that's pretty, pretty standardized. It's X number bedrooms. And the the flow is gonna be, gonna be Y. They're gonna go into the pu- the pump station and they're going to put monitors in there for a period of time. I I think it's a week or ten days. So they're gonna monitor how much is now coming into that pump station.
Yeah.
Then they will analyze the impact of the the additional flow. It's the whole purpose of the study. Um, if then they'll have a finding that will say the pump station can't handle it. Um, and to handle it, you're gonna have to pull the seven horsepower pumps out of there and put ten horsepower pumps in. So that then defines the upgrade that would be required to handle the additional flow. Um, not in that study is the cost estimation of that. But that obviously has to be, has to be done um um by the town engineer to say okay, if you, if you're gonna go this route, if you're gonna go the the municipal pump station upgrade and we've got to change out the um the seven horsepower pumps and put ten horsepower pumps and it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars. And you're gonna give us a hundred and fifty. Is that fair? Is that, is that um, is that doable? Do we have the hundred and fifty? Because one of the things that has to be assessed is is just that. It 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 can i- i- in in their rewrite of this condition, it says if if they give the hundred and fifty, then they don't have to do the holding tank. But that assumes that the pu- that the pump station is upgraded in in the timeframe that they need it to. Because this, the analysis said, we can't handle that additional flow. So there there's a little bit of nuance there that needs to be worked out with wh- when the study is completed and the decisions are made, whether they go option one or option two. Um, with regards to the timing and that's totally w- within the within the authority of of the town engineer to say no, you you can't just connect your pipe to our pump station cuz you gave us a hundred and fifty, but we need three hundred and we don't have it yet. We gotta appropriate it. We gotta go out to bid. We gotta actually do the work. Um, so I I think it's, I think it's appropriate to take this rewrite um and talk to Mike about it, make sure that 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 he's good with it and that he doesn't want to add language to it that that refines that that full process.
So you can talk to Mike about this. So I I asked if I could talk to Mike about this, but since we're beyond the open hearing, I'm not allowed. This was my understanding. But if you can I think this is where I had concerns about the scope, that it was, it was missing the the actual um upgrade recommendations with with estimates and that um there's actually to do this study, there's town in effort um uh on the part of DPW staff meetings um. And then lastly, uh, is this a place where the town might want mitigation? So let's say basic uh infrastructure improvement is rough order of magnitude, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a holding tank or um, the equivalent in the upgrades, but in the long, in, you know, the the long-term interest of the town, we want an upgraded pump station. We should have an upgraded pump station or, you know, does the engineer prefer an upgraded pump station? So then we would say a hundred and fifty thousand base um investment with mitigation up to whatever, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand.
It's, it's my understanding that e- early discussions between the applicant and and Mike um, that that Mike was okay with the alternative, the with the onsite um pump station. So the onsite stor- storage tank and the off-peak pumping um. Uh, that doesn't, doesn't mean that he wouldn't welcome uh his station to be upgraded. Um, any, any DPW would. Um, so I think that goes to the overall mitigation package um um discussion because
Without being able.
Base baseline, what they need to do is either put the onsite tank there in there or contribute towards the municipal. So that's, that's baseline. They they have to do that. It's not mitigation. They can't have the project unless they do one of the two things.
Right.
They might have to do two things, Joe. They might not be able to pump into that, that pump station might not be able, be able to take their off hours pumping. So you might have to upgrade it anyway.
Yeah, un- until the study says. I mean, we had one instance, one instance in another, another town where you know, there were times that the pump station was right, wrong, or indifferent, taking on a bunch of inflow and infiltration groundwater. Yeah, which which eliminated the the possibility cuz their peaks could come whenever it rained and sometimes it rains in the middle of the night. So, yeah, the it it it's, it's one of the risks that that the applicant has taken on by kicking this can down the road and saying, we're gonna do this, we're gonna have the study done post issuance of the conference of permits. They're trying to hedge their bets by capping the upgrade cost and, you know, that's something that should be um
We're at, we're at a disadvantage as far as that goes cuz we haven't seen any of that yet.
I I don't, I don't know where the one fifty came from on Grove Street. Um, so this is just a steal from from that saying, well, one forty B had the same situation and and they capped it at one fifty.
Well, it's the cost of the holding tank.
Mike might, but well, it's just seems strange that it's also the cost, the the cap that was in on Grove Street. So
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know where that one came from. So I I I I can talk to Mike.
Yeah, if you can, if you can talk to Mike, since I can't, and as our engineer, I just, I just wanna make sure that Mike is thinking um, long term, like with the context of the other development that's been in this area um. And, you know, what's in the best interest of the town? And making sure this study sort of answers that.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, couple of more, Joe. I think we're through your section here.
Um, yeah, eight, eight is uh that's standard, nine is
Yeah.
Again, a repeat of the conservation commission ordered conditions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um so I'll be working with Joe to rewrite section D in accordance with what we just discussed. S- s- section um well, the next section is headed from uh VAI recommendations in the original TIA that they prepared in February of twenty twenty five. Steve Finland, our peer reviewer blessed everything that Jeff Dirk from VAI had to say, but he didn't um, he didn't add to it. He he said, oh, this looks good. So I went back to Jeff's to see what I could extract in terms of, so this is literally from the TIA. I I didn't edit it. I wanted everybody to see it in its original form. Um, and this is the the uh project access Route one forty at Chestnut, Route one forty corridor, transportation demand management. All this is directly taken from the TIA. And I'm not, I'm seeing a couple of edits in the, in the applicant's track change here. Um, I, you know, a lot of, a lot of what Jeff is saying in his recommendations is uh editorial and I'll, I'll I'll probably just leave it, but they did strike sidewalk in the, in the project access. Uh, the one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet in my version was sidewalks are excited to link the residential buildings and extend the Route one forty where a sidewalk segment is proposed to be constructed between the project site driveway and the driveway that serves four forty Central Street, the current terminus of the sidewalk along the south forty. So I I don't know why they eliminated that. I'll talk to them about that, get an answer.
That was the sidewalk I was talking about before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the one in the front, in the, in the uh, that, well, then that's probably why they deleted it because.
We simply deleted that because it was a duplicate.
Oh, okay.
Just copied over accidentally.
Okay. And then um
I had a comment on one of those bullets where it says um uh, project site driveway will include Americans with disabilities add compliant wheelchair ramps. And I would wanna add um and tactile mats. So not just the ramps, but they also have the the tactile mats, the bumps for visually impaired.
Where is it in the uh bullets?
It's um the third one from the bottom. It says ADA compliant wheelchair ramps.
Yeah, marked, marked crosswalks are proposed within the project.
Yeah, and and so what words do you want added at the end?
Um, wheelchair ramps and tactile mats.
Got it. There are a couple of um you know, so the the next one, for example, says in order to offset the predicted impact of the project, the project proponent will design and implement an optimal traffic signal timing and phasing plan for the weekday evening, Saturday peak hours. So that's, that's the requirement that Jeff buried in the editorial. And be done prior to the issuance of a CO. So I'm gonna make this easier for Gus to find, to make sure he's not giving out COs without this being done. I'll start the sentence that says prior to the Oh, and then Gus can just do a find in the word document and all that will pop out and he'll have a list of things to do when he gets there. Uh, the same thing is true of the. Next one.
I um, on the, on the.
Improvement study.
On the traffic study um. For the light timing. I know I had a challenge when we were talking through this in the hearing that um. We didn't have any, we had specific um, impact for this particular project. But it wasn't cumulative from all the other ones along the stretch that had been recently approved. And so I'm wondering if we could also request the weekday morning. Even though this is saying um, minimal impact there. There, there was a missing data. That I felt um. I questioned during the during hearing. So this says that um.
Yeah, no changes are required during the weekday morning peak hour.
Yeah, I think I'd like them to also um. Look at that.
Uh, I will ask.
Okay.
Don't they have something that's three months? Of the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy that they're gonna relook at or something? What is that? The last sentence. Number three. The CIS will be prepared in coordination with the town.
Yes, that's.
Initiated within three months.
Right, and they've uh, put a price tag on that of twenty thousand. Um, and I'm guessing that that's included in their proposed mitigation. And there's another study that they're asked, that they're, they were asked to do. And that's the uh. Optimal signal, timing and phasing plan, and their price tag estimate on that is fifteen thousand. So there's. Thirty fif- fifteen thousand buried in paragraph number two and twenty thousand buried in paragraph number three. For a total of thirty five.
So paragraph number three, when that came up in the public hearing, I questioned the scope of. A concept study. I would like to propose that they. Uh, preparation of a quarter improvement study with an accompanying uh, conceptual improvement plan. And associate preliminary cost estimate. I, I think if it was brought to a schematic design level plan. That would help get a better cost estimate. And then for the corridor improvement study, I'd like to also ask. That they study um, a fixed bus route along the stretch from the property to that intersection, which was part of the master plan.
Well, I I think your best advice to. Form of a motion.
All right, I would like to move that the corridor improvement study as proposed by the applicants. Include a schematic design level plan and estimate. And also um, a concept for a fixed bus route. Along. Uh, East Central Street from the site to the King Street um, intersection.
What kind of bus route? Me Gatcher or whatever the name of it is?
A fixed bus route as. Proposed in the Town of Franklin master plan goals.
Burnley Gatcher.
Yeah, there's only Gatcher, but I mean, you know, you you can put it in there, probably never be done, but whatever.
And is there any estimate what those additional items would add to the cost?
I don't have one.
No.
I mean, if this. Might be something that we would want to check with Steve. In terms of, you know, I don't know whether we're adding five thousand or five hundred thousand. So I'll, I'll take that upon myself to do. And did you want to make any other suggestions? To the, for example, signal, timing and phasing plan?
The signal timing was the the request to include the weekday morning peak hours.
Uh, I got it right. I'm, yeah. Okay, I'll ask Steve both questions.
Um, I'm. Wanted to go back and reread and I I couldn't find it, but I believe the planning board when they reviewed. They had in their approval um, something about the school bus pickup. That there would be a a pull off or turnaround so that school buses wouldn't be picking up on Route one forty.
And was that in uh? A planning board?
Courtesy non-binding review.
Yeah, is it in writing?
I don't know, I didn't see.
It's, it's my experience that.
You can't make the school buses do what the school don't want them to do, number one.
It's even worse than that. It's not the school, it's the, it's the contract. The company that has the contract for the schools. And you can't make them go on to private sites.
Always a problem.
I mean, maybe, maybe the language to study of the bus route is for. You know, to to include a a provision of a. Safe stopping point for municipal and or school buses.
Well, the the most I've seen done generally is that a bus stop is built within easy access to the street. But it's on the private property. And not, the bus isn't entering the property, the bus is just stopping on the street in front of the bus stop. That's pretty common.
You mean, they put a little hot up or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if if that was part of the um, corridor improvement study.
If if I would could jump in your previous public hearings, we did coordinate. And we we put this on the record, we coordinated with the school department. They noted that pickup would occur on Central Street and no separate stop would be required and they also did not want to access our. Private property, so.
Would it be possible to put some sort of a structure that would keep the kids dry while they're waiting for the bus? On your property?
I I think Pe- Peter and I can talk offline about that. The clubhouse would probably serve as that structure because it's so close to the, you know, street.
It's not that close to the street. That was a comment from the planning board to move it closer to the street. Now, I think a a bus shelter is a good.
All right, we'll we'll have, we'll have those conversations. Next, next opportunity.
I don't recall the school committee talking about. The bus out on the street. In any of the public hearings.
All right, so the the last thing that we have in this document that is calling for our attention is a offer. By the applicant. To. Provide the full cost for the engineering of a detailed construction document plan and facilitating improvements. Through public construction bidding process, which will effectively put the town in a position to submit a fully engineered proposal to the state for a request. Uh, for funding to be es- estimated at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the applicant will contribute three fifty to the town prior to receipt of the first certificate of occupancy to help facilitate this effort. The applicant has agreed. In the above one forty corridor improvements. And which includes assisting the town to prepare mass works or a housing works grant. So they're basically offering three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Prior to the receipt of the first CO. To facilitate an application for mass works or housing works grants. Any thoughts?
Doesn't go very far. Could that be five hundred thousand?
Um, is this an undertaking that the town wants to proceed with? I mean, you know, let's talk about the money secondarily.
In the um, Town of Franklin master plan, that intersection. Was highlighted as one of the priorities for the town to um, assess and. Make improvements in. And so when a study was proposed by the applicant, um, I had, for the purposes of. Uh, submitting for grants. I had said, could there be a um. Uh, either a matching agreement or uh, some other type of allowance to go with um. Actually implementing what the study recommends. So this feels like a response to that.
Just explain that to me again, Janelle, what you're talking about. When. The study on one intersection, King Street?
Yeah, the corridor improvement study is gonna come, come out with. What we might do to improve the traffic that intersection, right? What options might be?
Right.
What's being proposed is a concept with a. High level estimate. And. I'm saying if if they brought it to a schematic design level, we could get a better estimate. Be submitted for grants, but a lot of times these grants are require matching funds, which we know the town may or may not have. Um, and so I had asked if the applicant would be willing to. Provide some type of matching agreement or um, an allowance to be used for recommendations that might come out of this study.
Well, that was my thought that they did, they designed something and then we get some grant money or whatever, ask the state to give us money to fix the intersection. That's one of the questions I brought up. You know, would they do, they would probably do it more because it's a town property. That intersection has a state property. So if they would do it because it's the town prop- property, you know, they're not spending their own money. They're not giving themselves their own grants. So it's more than likely that we'd get a grant to do something like that. But you have to have a design, you have to start somewhere. That's where the mitigation comes in to to start, but. If you talk to Mark and you talk to everybody else, I'm not sure that we can force them or ask them to give some because it's so far off site. I understand it's mitigation for what all the people complained about. You know, about the traffic and everything else. I see it that way, but evidently the state may not see it that way. If they decided that they, whatever we put in there was too much money. Then they could use that as an appeal, but.
I think what we need to do is. This is truly mitigation. So I think what we need to do is look at what they've offered. And then be prepared to talk about whether or not, A. Right mitigation to accept, B, whether it's enough mitigation to accept. And, you know, I think that's probably all we can do today. I mean, I I think they're clearly trying to put their best foot forward here. And I have no. I have, I have no clue whether it's what you want, but I think that's what you need to decide.
So Janelle mentioned five hundred thousand. I think that's probably a fair price to to start with and see where that goes.
Listen, I throw out a million bucks last meeting, you know, I mean, we we gotta, you know, it it's probably gonna not even, it might take that to do the design, then you got land taking. Stuff we gotta go through. You know, but, but I'm always told that it's very far off site. So. Probably gotta get.
I think if this, you know, if if I'm writing a permit and they didn't offer this and we imposed it. That's a very different thing.
Okay.
But where they've offered it, it's fair game. So.
Okay.
The question is whether we can come to a reasonable agreement on it, that's all.
I I appreciate that. I was heard.
Okay, so. I have the unenviable task of going back to parts A and B now. Can I, can I just take a census count there, Gus? What, what you got?
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of complaints, Mark. You know, I mean, maybe you should just do it just to cover.
I'm gonna do it. I just want to know how many people are online.
Oh, we got.
There are.
We got a bunch.
Thirty-eight, we lost one.
All right, well, I'm gonna go through conditions A and B. Uh, this is gonna be a. Pretty easy discussion because A is mostly programmatic and B, we're not, there were not terribly. Uh, many objections. So the first of these conditions have to do with the affordability of the project and I'm gonna go through them quickly. Uh, first of all, uh, condition A one, this project is limited to two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units. That's their final revised plan. Hundred sixteen or one bedroom, a hundred and twelve or two bedroom, twenty-six or three bedroom. The. Projects, two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units will have twenty-five percent of the units as affordable. And they will be marketed to eligible households with an annual income, not more than eighty percent of area median income. That's standard forty B. Uh, the actual marketing. Seventy and eighty percent, so you can open up a window and not just take the cream of the crop. Uh, the uh. Whole purpose of this is that by giving us twenty-five percent of the units as affordable. One hundred percent of the units count on the subsidized housing inventory for the Town of Franklin. So this. Will indeed add two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units of Franklin's SHI. Number three, uh. We asked the applicant to notify the ZBA and the town manager when. The building permits are issued. Number four, we ask again that they be notified when the occupancy permits are issued because this is. Part of the stepping stone of putting together an updated SHI. Number five, the units shall remain permanently affordable. This is not thirty years and gone. It's permanently affordable. The project does not comply with zoning. As long as it does not comply with zoning. There's a case from Wellesley years ago that says it's always gonna be affordable. So that's, we're just, we're just reiterating that. Number six, the units will be dispersed throughout the project. They will. Gated into a. Corridor or something like that. And uh, if there's construction and phasing, then the. Units, regardless of whether there's phasing, the units will be built and occupied. With a three to one ratio on a a reasonable schedule. And the affordable units are to be indistinguishable from the market rate units both inside and out. And that's standard in a rental project. Number seven, the applicant will execute a regulatory agreement countersigned by the subsidizing agency. Joe pointed out that it's also signed by the town because this is a lip. And that regulatory agreement is the key legal document that restricts the uh, dividend. That the uh, corporation can realize. Uh, under chapter forty B. The affordable units, number eight, shall not be segregated from the market rate unit. You can't have, as I said, you can't have a corridor that's all affordable units that are intermingled. And if it's a phased project, all of the phases will have a twenty-five seventy-five ratio. Number nine, the applicant will certify the continuing eligibility of any tenant. This is uh, income monitoring. So if somebody occupies unit one C and they hit the lottery. And they were formerly a household that was eligible for affordable benefits. They are now a market rate unit and that unit is a market rate unit. they are now a market rate unit and that unit is a market rate unit. And the next affordable unit to keep the balance seventy-five twenty-five that comes available will be made into a affordable unit. So it's a constantly evolving building. Uh, there, there's not just a location for the rental project, rental units. It'll change over time. Num, and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are conditions that address what happens when the regulatory agreement expires, which is usually after thirty years. If the, the project is still gonna have affordable units in it because it's affordable literally in perpetuity. But the entity in control of monitoring and supervising the chapter forty B aspects of it will switch from E O H L C to the Town of Franklin. And that requires a new document called a springing regulatory agreement. It won't take effect for thirty years. And it basically mimics, reiterates the conditions that are in the initial regulatory agreement. And the whole purpose here is to just make sure that there's an orderly transition when the regulatory agreement, the original agreement expires. Number sixteen, uh, there is a preference that Franklin is allowed to have. And the preferences in the selection of the affordable occupants, the affordable unit occupants. And the preference, which can be up to seventy percent of the affordable units, uh, is for A Franklin residents, their parents and children, B persons who had resided in Franklin within two years, immediately proceeding their application for housing, and C employees of the Town of Franklin. There's a process that, uh, gives those people a leg up in terms of the initial lease up, when the building is first getting occupied. And, um, that local preference, um, can continue after the initial lease up as the building marches on in time. Number seventeen, the applicant will submit a report for marketing activity to show that they are leasing up the project in accordance with the local preference requirement. Number eighteen, the Z B A acknowledges it will be required to provide evidence to the subsidizing agency of the need for the local preference. And the applicant is supposed to help. And that preference ought to be reflected in their marketing plan. Number twenty, if the Z B A finds that the applicant is in violation of the restriction for affordable housing, the Z B A can pursue its enforcement rights either under the restriction or applicable laws. Number twenty-one, if there are profits in excess of those allowed under applicable law and in a rental project, that's, uh, it's a limited dividend restriction. Uh, the, uh, regulatory agreement states that the profits are to be shared down. Number twenty-two, the applicant will provide, uh, annually, uh, copies of any old documents that they're giving to the subsidizing agency, which here is a state agency. So the, whatever goes to the state comes to the Z B A. Twenty-three, the Z B A, uh, primarily through the building commissioner, but the Z B A as well, has continuing jurisdiction over the project. The enforcement agent here though is the building commissioner. And lastly, uh, prior to receiving any building permit, the applicant will obtain final approval from the subsidizing agency. That's a requirement in the regulatory agreement. So those are the A conditions for affordability.
I think at this, at this point, I asked about, um, prior to, uh, receiving a building permit, does the town review any type of, um, financing plan to confirm capital has been secured so that we don't wind up with a half-built project?
Yeah, and I think we explained that the, the chief vehicle for that is the relationship with the lender and the applicant.
Yeah.
If, if they're, if they're wasting money or they walk away, the bank's out. And they're gonna be quickly looking for somebody to fill the spot. And I've seen this happen quite a few times. It's, it's generally, the bank's not shy about finding somebody. So, because they're, they're drowning in debt every day. They don't find somebody. All right. So general conditions, uh, include the following. Number one, the, uh, the project has to be constructed substantially in conformance with the final plans. The, we're calling them the approved plans. And I've asked the applicant to give me a list of the approved, the final plans that they want to recognize here as the final revisions. So I know they submitted plans back in February, but they're gonna now tell me that they, uh, have revised it to a certain date. Sorry, I lost the connection for a second. And, um, there's also provision in the H A C regulations for insubstantial, insubstantial changes to those approved plans. And they're, uh, accompanied by examples in the regs that the, uh, applicant and the board can use to assess whether a change is substantial or insubstantial. There's a third kind of change, which is a field change. It's generally not even, uh, does not even rise to the level of insubstantial. And those are changes that can be made a, upon permission of the building commissioner. And they're usually very minor adjustments in the field. Uh, and we've, we've built that in so we don't put the applicant in a position where they're waiting twenty plus days to get an answer. Uh, number three, the project will conform to the following federal laws and codes. The, the building plumbing fire protection, elevator access and electric, the Wetlands Act, the endangered species program, D E P wastewater regulations, D E P stormwater requirements for, uh, regulatory program and historical commissions, applicable regulations. I don't think there are any here. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, number four, there will be no exterior construction activity on the property Monday through Friday, seven, except seven, seven AM to six PM, Saturday, eight AM to six PM. And no construction, exterior construction, uh, outside on any Sunday or any federal or state, I'm sorry, federal holiday, not state holiday. And that will be enforceable by the police department. Number four, utilities will be installed underground. Number five, the project will be operated in compliance with the decision after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. There's a dual purpose to the certificate. It regulates precon, pre-issuance, it regulates construction, post-issuance, it regulates occupancy. Number six, uh, water and sewer system at the applicant's sole expense. Number seven, the project, uh, will be subject to review by Mass D O T. Therefore, uh, it's important to recognize that Mass D O T, which has jurisdiction on East Central, is in charge of things that happen in there right away. The town, a number of different zoning cases have held over the years that the town has no authority to tell and to enter the state right away or what can be done in the right of way. That's the business of D O T. And if D O T tells them that they can or can't do something and it changes the plans that are approved, they have to come back to the board and get permission to change the plans. Uh, lighting for the project will be shielded. Uh, there will be a full cutoff luminaire and not more than
Three thousand.
Three thousand in Kelvin color temperature. Those are things that were added by amendment. Landscaping will be installed in accordance with the approved plans. Number ten, final design plans for the stormwater management system will comply with D E P regulations. Uh, Joe is gonna give me an additional bit of language there. Uh, utility work number eleven and in any public right of way shall be performed in conformance with the regulations of the town and Mass D O T if applicable. Number twelve, uh, any internal sidewalk trees, street trees to be planted adjacent to the sidewalk shall be installed before the final occupancy permit is issued. Number thirteen, uh, these aspects of the project will remain private in perpetuity. Parking areas, street lighting, drainage, buildings, sewer, water infrastructure, and the applicant alone shall bear the cost of maintenance repairs, replacements, snowpiling, and trash removal. And we added sidewalks to that. Number, number fourteen, twenty-four seven monitoring of the project. If there's a management company, let us know who it is so we can post it. In addition, video cameras twenty-four seven. Uh, number fifteen, uh, project will be sprinklered in accordance with N F P A standards. And that, uh, final fire alarm sprinkler plan will be submitted to the fire chief for review and approval. Sixteen, all underground water pipes have water tend, watertight joints. Seventeen is, uh, a, a provision that allows the applicant to, uh, first of all, it says that no C O will be issued until all of the improvements are put in place. But it goes on to say that if the, uh, improvement that has not been finished is not crucial on safety, the applicant can, uh, install a performance guarantee, which will suffice uh, for a certificate of occupancy. The thinking here is that if there's landscaping that remains undone on November fourth, I'm sorry, December fourth, fourth, which is where we are today, you wouldn't want them to go out there and plant tomorrow. It's gonna be eight degrees tonight. And, uh, he can put a performance guarantee in place. And if he doesn't put the trees in in the springtime, the board can act on the guarantee, get the money and send some, uh, private party out. Prior to the issuance of, the applicant will do a SWIP plan, storm water pollution and prevention plan. They'll do a N I P T E S plan, national pollutant discharge elimination system. And they'll do O and M plans for all stormwater drainage facilities, which are required by the D E P stormwater management regulations. Number nineteen, applicant will construct, I'm sorry, will conduct or submit a report on a hydrant flow test. No, that's done. I set one out. Um, number twenty, all blasting will be performed in accordance with five twenty-seven C M R one point oh. And that's the state regulations on point. It includes pre-blast surveys to be offered to nearby residents. Uh, some quick, uh, hitting conditions here. Twenty-one, only organic fertilizers and pesticides. Number twenty-two, sodium-based deicing chemicals not to be used on the property. Twenty-three, dumping of landscape debris, including leaves, grass copings, and brush is prohibited. Twenty-four, the project shall not twenty-five, grading will be consistent with the approved plans. Twenty-six, the applicant will provide post-permit documents and plans to the Z B A. If these are going to require review, whether it's an inspection or peer review of the materials, the applicant will pay all costs for post-permit inspections and peer review. Once they've provided a complete set, twenty-seven of all post-permit documents, the board has forty-five days to get the peer review comments. Twenty-eight, if the post, uh, peer review comments contain, uh, point out deficiencies, the applicants have thirty days to cure. Twenty-nine, if the deficiencies are not cured, the Z B A can enforce by normal enforcement procedures associated with land use laws. That's all gotta go through the building commissioner. Thirty, any building equipped with an elevator should program the elevator to return to the ground floor when a power outage occurs. Thirty-one, uh, the applicant will provide us, uh, uh, a, a, adequate operations plan for storage and collection of solid waste and recycling to make sure that odor and nuisance problems are avoided. Number thirty-two, if an irrigation system is installed, it will comply with specifications of the town. Thirty-three, all water and sewer construction shall be in accordance with Franklin's requirements. And thirty-four, no telecommunication equipment, cellar rays or antennas affixed to the roof or sides of the building. And I, that takes me to section C and I believe we
That's where we
We started all over there. So that, if you were in getting out of the waiting room, we apologize, but that's what we covered before you got out of the waiting, so.
We covered it all.
I think in all those things, the only thing we had a little bit of debate on was the construction timing. Um, and the
I'm fine with
Irrigation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just, you know.
I think we'd have more control over it if they, if they, if the town did it. And if the town said they couldn't do it, then they'd have to stop. But if you want them to put a well in to do irrigation, they'll probably do that.
Also added the, uh, wording on the downlighting and the lumens.
Yeah.
That took three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark got that already.
Yeah, I mentioned that.
Yeah.
Just trying to bring people up to speed before they could get in.
So the next time, uh, we do this, um, I'll have a clean version of this. And, um, I'll also have the sections we did not talk about tonight, which I think consists primarily of the waivers.
The waivers.
I, I'll also have filled in the blanks on facts that we just need to put in as a preamble and findings. But that, I wanna put in that Joe reviewed this and
Yeah.
Gave, gave it a bill of health and Steve Finland reviewed it and he gave it a bill of health.
Yeah.
So that it's all. Um, and I'll also have conversations with council, uh, for the applicant to see if we can't make some more determinations on things we left up in the air, so.
The, uh, you're gonna get us a copy of his corrections, right? Or his additions that he put in there?
As soon as we hang, uh,
Okay.
Send you that.
Okay. Yes.
This is, uh, through you to Mark. Mark, the address at the heading of the draft decision is, I believe, two ninety-eight Central Street for our address. So that should be three fifty-five East Central Street.
Three five five?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the town hall. And then look at the beginning of it.
Okay, thanks, Gus.
Welcome.
Anything else, Gus, you wanna add?
No, Franklin TV is aware that, uh, it wasn't available with YouTube, but it will be after the meeting is over.
No, I understand that.
That's what I'm being told.
Well, it's been, it was advertised at five different locations. So, and, and whatever they missed on the first hour, Mark just went over it again.
Apologies to the residents that this happened.
Yep.
A quick question, will we be opening the Zoom meeting? Is it Zoom next time we're meeting here?
Yes.
Uh, will it be opened, uh, to the public straight away?
No, we'll be at the town hall for the last meeting. It, it'll be the last meeting. I think we're probably gonna take a vote that night. On the eighteenth. Right, Mark? You'll be done by the eighteenth?
Yeah, um, I have, um, you know, everybody's trying to fit everything in before Christmas. I have a client in Stoughton. They are, they continued his meeting till the eighteenth. The, the public hearing has been closed.
Yeah.
So I'll find out in the meantime whether I'm gonna be able to speak or not. I doubt it. Um, but I have to talk with council in Stoughton in order to get the definitive answer. But I, I would prefer that we start at six again. And if I have to send somebody to Stoughton, like I said, the public hearing's closed. Well, I'm not gonna make much difference at that point, so.
Yeah. All right, let me just put it out to the board. Uh, you guys wanna start at six on the eighteenth?
I'm checking. I'm checking.
Okay. Archie?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. You want six thirty instead? Mark might go
Yeah, six thirty, we could.
That's fine.
Okay, six thirty.
Yeah, six thirty works.
Okay. Megan, is Megan on the call?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, six thirty?
Yeah, six thirty is good for me, Bruce.
On the eighteenth, yeah. Six thirty is good for me. Maybe I'll get some sleep that night. But anyway, with all, with all that, there's no future agenda items. We do have another thing, that Elm Street thing is coming back. So that'll be first on the agenda and then we'll get
Hey, Bruce, I just realized that I, I, I did, uh, you're the third meeting.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility we can do the seventeenth?
The seventeenth is a Friday night.
No, it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, the seventeenth is the day before. Yeah, okay. I, they might have a council meeting that night.
Uh, there was one last night, so fourteen, yes, it is a
Yeah.
They probably don't. Fourteen days, so.
How about the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Why aren't we your first meeting?
It's like I said, they're just trying to stuff everything in the last Thursday of the year. This is the last Thursday of the year, really.
Yeah, before you get to the holiday.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I know I have to be in Stoughton. I forgot I have to be in Draken. Um, and they don't do Zoom. So, um, is there any other, like the sixteenth, would that work? is there any other, like the 16th, would that work?
Would the 16th? Yeah. 16, what about the following Tuesday? Because Monday, I think the planning board, I don't think anybody, I don't know if anybody meets on Tuesdays.
I'm good with the 23rd. I don't, I don't like it anymore than you do, but I'm
Pardon?
Design review, Bruce. And I don't know if it's that Tuesday or not. You have to double check.
Okay, my understanding was they met remotely anyway.
I think, I think you're right, so.
And what board other than us would have a meeting on the 23rd of December?
Well, the design review. I guess, and I'm not even sure if they, they got one scheduled, if they got anything on the agenda. But as far as I know, they've been meeting remotely. I don't think they went back to the town hall, so. All right, we'll leave it like this now. We'll leave it for the 18th. But chamber is open on December 16th.
Yes.
I just got that message.
Yep, chamber is open on December 16th?
I can't do the 16th.
Okay.
You're important. You're one of the votes.
I can do the 23rd.
Can we, can we pull
reluctantly?
Can we, it'll be our, it'll definitely be my last meeting of the year.
Yeah. I don't know if Jamie can hear. Jamie, 23rd sound okay?
I just unmuted.
You're unmuted if you're 23rd.
You put in the chat that the 23rd is open.
Yeah, 23rd is open. Okay, I'll make a motion. Well, well, I'll get a, I'll get, I'll call and get a continuation.
You gotta pick a date certain.
No, no, the 23rd, but we had something scheduled for the 18th. I'm going to see if I can get them to go to the 23rd.
I see.
You know, so that we don't have to.
Yeah, do you have anything else on the agenda for the 18th?
No, other than that, that's it. I mean, if that's, if that's the case, we could probably show up on the 18th and get rid of that one. And then the 23rd come back. You guys open to do that?
It's, it's the Draken meeting that I'm, that I
Yeah, okay, no, no, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my members to agree that we can do one, one thing on the 18th, and then we'll do the other thing.
I have three meetings in one night. This is ridiculous.
Do we do the 18th via Zoom to get that one out of the way? And then the 23rd would just be this project?
We could, if you want, if that's the way you want to do it.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor to have the 18th meeting as a Zoom meeting. It's only got the one thing, the Elm Street.
Archie, Elm Street project.
Elm Street, lot. Motion made in second and roll call vote. Janelle?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, so we're going to meet on the 18th via Zoom. We're going to be in the town hall on the 23rd.
And you're going to
At 6:30.
6:30, is that, that, Mark, can you make that 6:30?
Yeah, you want to, are you going to go live?
Yeah, we're going to be in the town hall.
All right, I'll come down.
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm checking the, yeah, 23rd, 6:30, okay.
Okay, great.
So, so the way the end of the 40B process works is that we close the public hearing on the 20th.
Yeah.
We've got 40 days.
To make a decision.
Like the last day of the year is the 40th day. We've got another 14 days to file.
From the time we make the decision?
You have to make the decision within the 40-day period, but you don't have to have it written up. You just have to make the decision. So we'll do that.
I mean, the, I think the intent is to meet on the 23rd and make a final decision.
Yes, and I'm going to have it as much, yeah, I'm going to have it as much of it on paper as I possibly can, so.
Okay. But you still have, you, you, you still got, is it just the 14 days after we close the public hearing?
Yeah, but I want to, if you want me to make changes to what I come down with in writing, I want you to be able to tell me with precision what you want me to change, so I can get it done.
Okay.
And then I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I think I'm driving to Florida on the 3rd, so.
Breeze, Breeze Airlines gets you right there.
Would you, would you, would you mind unmuting Peter Freeman when you get a chance, Gus?
Mm-hmm, sure thing. Sorry, Peter.
Peter, you up?
Yeah, wait, hold on one second. Okay. You got to find him again. There we go. You're on.
Thanks. The, I'm available on the 23rd, but I can't come in person because I'll already be in Vermont with my granddaughter. So I'm just wondering, in the past, you've had them hybrid. Can it
No, we do it, we do it. Listen, we do them Zoom anyway, but we're just going to meet live.
So it is hybrid, that's all I wanted to know.
And I'll see how it
Okay. So he, the one lawyer is going south, and I'm going north.
You can join, yeah, you can join in on that meeting on Zoom.
Great, thanks.
Mike will be sitting out in his car out in the parking lot, getting the last things done and then driving away.
All right.
All right.
That sounds good.
Okay, with all that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we, Peter, I'm sorry, do we need to continue the hearing to the 23rd?
The meeting, not the hearing. You just voted that, I think you just did vote
Well, we didn't vote it, we talked about it.
No, they didn't vote it.
Motion, motion to move, motion to resume this, continue this meeting until December 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Janelle?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second and to adjourn, non-debatable. Hallows in favor, roll call vote. Janelle?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.